All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Myers.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Sweeney Meyer.
Here.
Zuz.
Here.
Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Thank you for those who are able to join us this evening, and we're glad that you're listening in and participating in our process. And tonight, I think the only item that will pertain to the reopening will be in the superintendent's report, just for those of you who are here primarily for that. We also have some other items on the agenda coming up, but that will be the bulk of the reopening. And I just wanted to spend a couple minutes addressing the process that the board chose to use for reopening and what the board's role is. So we decided about a month and a half ago to approve the five phases that the district put together, depending on the conditions we faced at each moment. And we voted on that and said that those five phases were fine, and we let the district decide which phase to be in at any given moment based on the conditions surrounding them. Some other districts are voting on the actual phase they're opening in. We took a different approach, which we hope gives the district more flexibility to move faster in between phases because we're in such an uncertain environment. That being said, if there were to be a significant change to one of the phases, we may have to go back and vote on it if it's substantially different from what we did approve back in, I think, June or July. So I just wanted to address that for some of you who might be waiting for us to sort of vote on this. That's not currently our plan. We already did vote on the high-level five phases. So with that, I would like to begin with the superintendent's report. Rob?
Thank you, Board President, Marquess, board members. It's good to see everyone. It's August 11th, so we are nearing the beginning of school. A year, a start to the year certainly unlike any other that I've had the chance to be a part of. We introduced our new teachers back last Thursday. Our school leaders came back to work last week, and teachers start tomorrow. Although I was in some schools today and saw teachers already working diligently to get their classrooms set up as we begin to enter Phase One. So for superintendent's comments this evening, we're going to walk through a bit of a reintroduction update. Now, the good news is that we are just clarifying the decision to move back to Phase One last week. We're not changing that recommendation at this point and feel very confident that this is where we're going to start at the beginning of the year. Again, Back Together BVSD is our hashtag in really all of our reintroduction efforts. Again, just so much work, board members, that's happening with our team. We've had lots of great questions since our announcement last week, lots of great comments, feedback. I appreciate our community being so engaged on this effort and understanding the complexity. I had lots of folks really respond and just thanking us for trying to do what's right and taking a look at all the aspects of the information out there in front of us. And there's been a lot of engagement, which I think is a really good thing. So to speak to Phase One Plus, give a little more detail. I would like to introduce Margaret Crespo, who's going to take over the presentation. Margaret?
Good evening, everyone, members of the board, President Marquess, and Dr. Anderson. If we can go to the next slide, I'll just give a quick update on where we are. So as you remember, last week, we talked about a whole learning structure and that we had taken a lot of feedback from parents and students. And those high-level pieces that you'll see tonight, working on publishing a common schedule, providing more information around our live learning, having virtual office hours at secondary specifically, and then making sure that parents and students were aware of their expectations and ongoing learning opportunities. And then from teachers that we spoke to throughout the spring, summer, and recently, we were asked about providing additional resources and support, clear guidelines for attendance, grading, and engagement. If you remember, last spring, things were a little bit on the high-level side because we wanted to give a lot of space for students and families and teachers to become comfortable with the virtual experience. And then we want to make sure that we are clear on the insurance of student SEL support as they return to school. So I'm so excited to share this wonderful news around our Monday launch day. It really is an opportunity for our teachers to participate in professional learning and plan time. It's really important that we think about the fact that the school day in a virtual situation, teachers don't have the level of planning time that they would normally have as students are coming in and out of the virtual experience and we're moving into their elective classes or their special areas. We want to make sure that teachers are engaged in meeting the needs of their small groups and staying connected. So that's why Monday in so many ways is so important. We also have a lot of time for them to collaborate on Mondays virtually and in person so they can continue to create engaging lessons that are working together in cohorted models. And then we want to make sure that parents and students know what's expected of them for the remainder of the week and how they can get support if needed. As we've mentioned before, our learning management systems are PK3 Seesaw and 412 Schoology. And the teachers will be uploading the class content in advance that Monday launch day so that families know what to expect for the week. And then throughout the course of the year, it will be beneficial so that students know they can get content access at any time, day or night. Some learners learn better in the afternoon so that there's that level of flexibility, and they know when we're in, even in our in-person learning, where to go for their work. So the following slides are examples, very high-level examples, of the elementary, middle, and high school schedules that we'll be sharing. There's a letter and communication that will go out tomorrow as we typically send out right after a board meeting. Families will be able to look more closely at kind of the overall template of what we're looking for for each of our levels. So I'll go over these really quickly now so that we don't take up too much time. So you can see that at elementary, we're looking at office hours. We want families to know that teachers are available for them at a set time. We've got morning meetings, the importance of our SEL piece. As we've mentioned before, building out lots of opportunity for our students to connect their digital citizenship piece and their transition time. We recognize that in virtual as well as in face-to-face, students need lots of time chunked out for their learning and that they need breaks and activity and movement. And then we would move through the topics. You can see that specials are explicitly called out there, reading, writing. We've tried to build in movement breaks and then making sure that academic time in reading and writing are included throughout the day. If we can get the next slide. And then here's the next one will be the example of we want to have lunch throughout the system so that students are used to what their scheduled time looks like. Looking at independent work, you can see math is included in there. And then some of the other components and content areas that need to be addressed. I am going through this really quickly because it is very much a high-level update. There'll be more information in the letter going out to the community tomorrow. But we really just want to impress upon our family and communities that these schedules are built and reviewed and looked at and that each school may have a little variation based on program focus or needs of the building or staffing. Now we'll move to the middle school schedule, and you can see that there's math and literacy independent work built into this sample schedule. We have lots of opportunities for synchronous learning, guided and group practice. We want to make sure that those practices that have happened in face-to-face happen online in our virtual experience as much as possible. And then you can see that the schedule is broken up into usable formats so that students have lots of opportunity for break and live synchronous learning. If we move to the high school schedule, here's an example of a block schedule that we're looking at. We're including across, I'm super grateful, the principals at all three levels have provided feedback and teachers and leadership teams about samples that would work in the buildings. We have common lunch, that was something we heard throughout the K-12 model. And then making sure that our freshmen had a lot of support. You can see that the freshman seminar through 10, 16, 20 is a highlight. We want to make sure that our students are transitioning into high school in this very strange time in the best way possible. And you can see we've developed student support and office hours to make sure that as students are going through their coursework, they have access to the teachers that can give them the best support. Okay, so one of the pieces that we talked about before was attendance. In the past, attendance was based on their completion of work in the spring. We are back to looking at attendance based on participation and live engagement, which essentially is being present in the sessions, completion of assignments, tasks, and their communication with teachers. We recognize that there are needs to be flexibility, but at the same time, have to monitor students' attendance to continue to report what that looks like to the state and to other agencies. So as we look at the student log in Seesaw, we ask that students check in once a day to make sure that they're getting all the information they need, as well as having daily opportunities for students to have live engagement sessions. And that's another way for us to tell our attendance. And I'm just so grateful to our teams for all the work they've done around this. Teachers and staff this summer, we're looking at weekly feedback so elementary students can receive weekly feedback on their academic process. It will all be posted on our learning management systems, both Seesaw and Schoology, so that students and families know where they are, what's expected of them, what their feedback looks like, and at any given time, teachers can put that information in there with a minimum of weekly. And then in secondary, the grades will be updated weekly in Infinite Campus as they always have. Those are how the grades are carried. And all of their assignments and learning materials and resources will also be available in Schoology. Now, I just want to say this as often as possible. Many of our teachers use Google Classroom. Those will all be linked to Schoology so that the staff and the students, I mean, the parents and the students are only connecting in those two platforms. This on the left is an example of what our Schoology system looks like. And Seesaw looks actually very similar as well. You can see the calendar in the background and the student work, what their assignments and what their to-dos look like are all in there in their coursework. We also have videos, so I'll just share. We have short videos, as I've mentioned before, for families so that they can also step through the process. Thanks, Randy, for that. And then our next slide, we have live engagement opportunities. So for elementary, we will be providing a minimum of three live engagement opportunities every single day. So staff will be connecting with their kids, a morning meeting, checking in with them, launching on their instruction components, being with them through their virtual learning at a minimum of three times a day. And at secondary, we'll provide a minimum of one live engagement opportunity. So if you think about kids moving through a schedule at the secondary, they will connect with their teachers every single day live, just as if they were face-to-face. And a reminder that Mondays will be independent learning and that educators will not be available for live content. Certainly, families and students are more than welcome to email their teachers but would expect responses after Monday. And then our goal would be that the students are working on that independent portion of their learning on that Monday piece. And off to Renee Williams. I'm handing it off.
Good evening, everyone. So I will speak a little bit more about childcare. The sites that are listed on the website right now are the sites that we are confident we can open on August 26th. We anticipate that we will be able to open additional sites as the need presents and as staffing allows. Early Connections, which is for infants and toddlers, is opening tomorrow. I think we have six babies, we call them babies, that are ready to roll tomorrow, and our staff is all set and ready to welcome them. For families, it's really important to know that in Phase One Plus, children from different schools may attend one of these childcare sites. So just because you don't see your school site listed doesn't mean that you're not able to receive care. You can register at any of these sites, and as more become available, we're able to move students around. Next slide. So one of the things that is really important is that we have operational clarity. So we created this BVSD Community Schools Licensed Childcare Handbook, and we started it with emergency childcare back in the spring. We've updated it. It's completely in Spanish, too, for all our families, and there's a live link on our website. And the main thing is that regardless of where your child attends a childcare program in BVSD, as long as it's licensed, they will follow all of these rules. And that ensures that cohorts are maintained and aligned with the school cohort of attendance and that we do contact tracing, active screening, masking. All of the social distancing requirements are consistent across sites and that we make sure that equal opportunity and access are given to students across sites, and that includes access to the school working and devices. Our fee structures, our operational hours, and our licensing protocols are uniform throughout the district. Our employee qualifications are standardized, and all the childcare employees have, they're not teachers, but they do have a significant amount of required training per state licensing. And the handbook also provides operational clarity for all of our employees. It's a tremendous effort to try to coordinate all of these different sites in a pandemic and make sure we're all aligned and supporting one another and not becoming a hindrance. And so state licensing has access to this, public health has access, our community partners. And we do have a bilingual Spanish specialist on staff, and she can talk to folks in Spanish, and she can also make sure that every written material is, I think it right now is on the website, translated. But if it's not and someone needs it, then please just reach out and we will get it translated for you. Next slide. This model is scalable. And so what we're trying to do is balance the licensed capacity with the standards of COVID care for licensed childcare. So a typical SAC site can hold 100 students, and we're able to. At those 12 sites that'll be open August 25th, we can, 26th, I'm sorry, we can have 100 students. What we want to do is start with 30. Again, this is scalable. We are confident that we can meet the community's demands and needs. At preschool, typical site has 20 students, and effective, the first day of operation will have 16. Early Connections, our capacity is stable, 20 infants and 20 toddlers. Right now, I believe there's 200 students who are registered across all of our programs, so we are more than able to meet the need. We have every person in each of these locations staffed. So if we needed to open tomorrow, we can. We're not going to, but we can. And again, it's scalable. So you know, as the demands come in, we can open a site at an area of the district that is really in demand and in need. And we're very easily able to adapt and flex to the different phases in the reintroduction plan. And the childcare rates are posted online. We have a full-time, a part-time three-day, and a part-time two-day rate. We do have a sibling discount. There is financial assistance. And this one, I want to point out because it's a little confusing. Free and reduced lunch applications for free and reduced students are through the National School Lunch Program. Those are all the fees a family traditionally pays when they go to school, right? Or you have free and reduced lunch. Childcare is required to, families who qualify for free and reduced are also required to apply for the Childcare Assistance Program. We call it CCAP. And we need both of those applications in place. 99% of the time, someone who qualifies for free and reduced lunch through the school lunch program also qualifies for CCAP. We will help folks. I know it's confusing. And then families can purchase school lunch through their account or their children can bring their own, and we provide morning and afternoon snacks.
Thanks, Renee. And just one other point as we try to really do everything we can to make childcare affordable. We are looking at some additional structures for families with multiple students. And so I know that that was, you know, several folks reached out to me around having multiple kids. And could we think about maybe additional discounts because of everything that's going on? And so we're working on that and we'll have that clarified on our website. So board members, as you would recall, we, last week, we talked about a Phase Two Plus and the steps that we are going to be taking to develop a plan to be able to return kids in person. And so at this point, I'd love to turn the presentation over to Sam Messier.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, President Marquess, members of the board. Since we spoke to you last week, we have assembled our working advisory group to help us think through the specifics of what Phase Two Plus is going to look like. We've got four parents on the committee, five principals, 15 teachers, and 10 central office district staff. We've already started work. We had our first meeting today, and really, we spent our time together focusing on building a common foundation of knowledge and a common vocabulary about the problem that we face. Our next step is going to be to conduct empathy interviews with a variety of different stakeholder groups this week. It was impossible to include all the people on the committee, on the working group itself, that we would like to have there to represent all perspectives. So we felt it was very important for us to conduct these empathy interviews to ensure that we're understanding how the problem at hand impacts a variety of different groups, our students, our parents, particular groups of parents, our Latino parents, parents who are engaged in organizing some of the learning pods. We also really want to reach out and make sure we're understanding the experience that our paraeducators are having. So we'll be doing some interviews with them as well. And then before I hand it back to Dr. Anderson, just wanted to remind everyone that this year, like every year, we'll be having our Fall Help Center for Families, where help will be available in both English and Spanish. And this help is really, the Help Center is online, so there are a lot of web-based tutorials that people can access with helpful tips about how to complete their online enrollment, how to complete their annual data update, how to apply for free and reduced lunch. People can also, parents are welcome to call in and get help by phone or email. That's also available in both English and Spanish. And there will be some in-person appointments that'll be made available to folks on a limited basis. So invite you to check out the website for more details on that.
Thanks, Sam. And so that is our reintroduction update. Board members, happy to take any questions.
Okay, so I'll just go in alphabetical order, and we'll start with, oh, I'm trying to figure, with Richard. Is that okay?
Sure. Thank you, Rob. Thanks, Margaret. Thank you, Sam. I just have a couple of questions regarding the remote learning. I have heard from, oh, I don't know, quite a few Latino parents that have small homes and have three or four school-age kids. And sometimes they have to do all of their remote learning in one room. And the question that they had for me was, is there any way that the district could supply for these families earphones or something so that it reduces the noise factor? Because if all of them are on the computers together, then it's going to be pretty difficult for them to continue their learning. So that's one question. And the other question along that line, too, is my understanding is that last spring, some of the materials that were being sent out, in some instances, needed to be printed out in home printers. And many of these particular homes do not have home printers, much less, they don't have devices, much less home printers. So is there anything the district is doing to accommodate some of these particular families?
Great question, Richard. We can absolutely look into purchasing headphones for those families who need that. If you'd like to connect those families with me or with Andrew Moore, we can start working on a plan for that tomorrow. And then in regards to having items needed to be printed out, I don't know, Margaret, if you'd want to address that. I think my initial thoughts are you can't do that, right? To assume everybody has a printer, everybody doesn't have a printer, right? Or if they have a printer, not everybody knows how to hook up their computer with a printer. So that would be something that I would have concerns with. But Margaret, do you want to touch on that, please?
Sure, I can absolutely address that. And actually, I can never connect my computer to my printer, so, and I've lost computers. I would say that we have addressed that by using Schoology and Seesaw. Families will not have to print. They can directly go into the system to do their assignments. There's no printout needed because we did hear that a few times last year. And we also have situations where if there is an issue, I would certainly have those families reach out to our IT Prime because they can help them get connected if there's a conductivity issue. And if there's not, then have families reach out to us. If by some chance a teacher is asking or someone is asking for that printout, we will make sure that we figure out a way for them to do it online so that they don't have to do printing. We actually would prefer that they're not printing, to be honest, because there's nowhere for that paper to go at this point. That's why we've done so much work to move everything online.
Thanks, Margaret. Thanks, Rob. Another question around childcare. I'm still concerned with the fact that we only have one site for infant toddler. Because I, you know, it seems to me like there would probably be more infant toddler need, but if not, that's fine. But are the individual school sites going to be able to accommodate infant toddler? Or is that limited to the Arapahoe Ridge campus?
I'll let Renee answer that. I believe the answer, though, Richard, is because of the strict licensing requirements that State of Colorado has, we don't have facilities in those sites. That's why we drive everybody to the Arapahoe campus where we have that site and so it can be certified. Renee, am I right on that?
You are correct. And Richard, it's a site that's built to spec, and it's the only site in the district that actually can accommodate infants and toddlers per licensing, and we've never been at capacity. So, and we're also one of the only sites across Boulder County that takes CCAP. So we really are providing a need for the community who are at risk.
Say that again, you're the only site in Boulder County that takes CCAP?
No, we're one of the only, for the babies, for the infants and toddlers, we're one of the few sites that do take CCAP.
Okay, so that also gives me a little bit more of an uncomfortable feeling because even the out-of-school facilities, I mean, they're going to be jam-packed probably, so.
And you know what? So I work really closely with Boulder County Department of Human Services, and we are in active conversation right now. We are very clear we can meet the need. And if not, we will figure that out. But right now, we're really, we're certain that we can meet that need.
Thank you.
I will share, Richard. I really appreciate your comments in regards to the equity challenges that Phase One certainly presents. And so we are continuously working and committed to taking all these on to make sure that we're serving each and every kid in Boulder Valley Schools. I appreciate your questions.
Okay, Kathy?
Thanks, everyone. This is helpful to get a little bit more structure and understanding about what's going on. I just have a couple of questions. I maybe missed it in the slides, but I don't have a clear sense of how the working group is working. I thought we were going to have a presentation in September from them. Is that the plan? And how often will they meet? And will we have any insight into what they're meeting about?
Yeah, I can provide regular updates to the board on what's happening in those meetings. We will be bringing a presentation to the board on September 22nd. Our path to getting there is to, we have three meetings scheduled this week. We have one meeting the next week. And then I think we're at one meeting a week for a few weeks to finalize some of the details and do some of the design work, then culminating in a written proposal that we'll send back to the committee for some written feedback, and then digest that, put it into the final proposal and bring it to you all on September 22nd.
So does the committee have a pretty clear objective or goal that you can share with us that they're working towards? Or is that yet to be determined?
Yeah, well, I think what I can tell you is that the problem that we're actively trying to solve, you know, I think the first stage into, you know, as you're trying to solve a problem is to really define what that problem is. And at this point, the way we're defining the problem is that we want to bring back or we want to get as many students as possible to have access to the benefits of in-person learning as we possibly can and do that in a way that's safe. So that's the problem that we're going to try to solve for. I will say, though, that sometimes during the empathy interview process, one gains a deeper understanding of the nature of the problem and how we define that problem could potentially shift a little bit.
I just think it's helpful for people to understand kind of what, like you say, the issue that you're trying to solve and when we'll get an update. We may not have an answer on September 22nd, but we'll have your best thinking around that by then. We may not have an answer on September 22nd, but we'll have your best thinking around that by then.
Absolutely.
And then, I don't know who can answer this, Rob, but I still have a, not a very clear feeling about how parents with students on IEPs fit into the whole schedule that you put out there. Is that just going to be handled individually, person by person, or school by school? Or how, how is that being handled for those, those families in the district?
Great question, Kathy. And I believe Margaret is prepared to answer, because she came up on the screen, so. Thanks, Margaret.
I am. And certainly, Robin Fernandez can jump in here as well. We have activated a plan as our teachers are returning tomorrow, first day back, super excited. And our directors for special ed are, will be reaching out to families individually to develop plans appropriate for each child, because it is case-by-case to meet those needs. And there will be communication in the letter around that that is going home tomorrow. So, we really are trying to be very specialized about, oh, there's Robin, about how we respond.
Yes, thank you, Margaret. So, the answer really is yes to all of the above. So, instruction will be delivered virtually, but it will be addressed on a case-by-case basis within the schedules that you will see that are defined per level, elementary, middle, or high. So, beginning tomorrow, when the special education teachers return, they will begin reaching out to every one of their students to connect with students and families, to ask them, "So, what was your experience in the spring in virtual learning? What worked well? What didn't work well? What do we need to know about your individual student? And then, how is your student now? Let's start to talk about your student's needs, how you anticipate that they will respond in Phase 1. What is it we need to know about them individually? How do you anticipate that virtual learning will be for them? What do we, as teachers, as leaders, as special education-related staff, need to know about your child?" And then, they will start to talk about individual student goals and how instruction will be tailored for them. So, that's a great question. Thank you.
And I assume, Robin, that the same answer would be at least somewhat consistent for students who are learning English as a second or third language, or ELL students?
Correct. So, there will be a lot of individual communication with families. But also, the, while like the special education staff, the CLDE staff is also prepared to support students in both the general ed environment by pushing into classrooms, but also to work with students individually and in small groups to address needs.
And then, one more quick question, Rob. I know, what's the percentage of students that we know right now that have signed up for all online for the whole year, at least this semester? Do we have a good count number on that, a percentage? Do we know yet? Are we still trying to figure that out?
So, for Boulder Universal, is what you're asking? I, I'll look at, I'll look to Margaret to see if she has that exact number. If not, we can get that to you. I think it was.
An estimate would be fine, yeah.
So, at last count, we were about 360 students who have moved to Boulder Universal. However, there's a fair number of them who are actually from out of district. So, over 100, closer to probably 150 that are out of district. And then, about 170 or so that are moving out of their homeschools to online. That does not count the students that are opting for home learning, still connected to their schools. And that number is ever-changing. I can get you the specific for tomorrow morning and send an email.
No, that's, I was just trying to get an estimate of what the numbers look like. What's the, what's the, what was the enrollment of Boulder Universal last year? Is this a big increase over what we've seen in the past?
It is a significant increase. We, we were looking at 10.5 teachers that were needed from our list that we moved, we would be moving into Boulder Universal.
So, that was my next question. Thanks, Margaret, was, you know, what kind of, because I remember getting some emails around concerns about making sure Boulder Universal provided sufficient rigor and support for the students that are moving there, and it sounds like you're in front of that already.
Yep. And I will add, because you brought that up, and that's awesome. I just want to say shout-out to Eric Moroi and his staff, who have already started working towards the training that teachers will need. Obviously, teaching in an online environment fully is a little bit different. And they've done an amazing job of developing that professional learning and moving forward. So, we're ready to go.
And then, what does tech look like?
So, right now, we're working, Boulder Tech will still have full existence on the online system. We're working on some parameters, like if they have apprenticeship coming up, things like that. So, they still have those opportunities to complete their certifications and their hours within their school schedule. What we are looking at is adding Boulder Universal for this first launch so that students can do their tech hours and not be impacted by their high school schedules, since we're virtual. And if we were to move to something more significant in person, they would still have the option of Boulder Universal so that they aren't cross-cohorting, which is obviously really important around our parameters.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Donna, do you have any question? Donna, I saw you on mute. Okay, we'll come back. Lisa, can we?
Wait, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Perfect.
Oh, sorry. To add on to what Kathy was asking, and maybe this is for Robin, but as she talked about the special education teachers coming in and calling the parents and trying to find out the needs, one thing we as special ed teachers have always done and should be doing to minimize some of this is, is looking at those IEPs and reading them intensely so that we know those students' goals and objectives, and whether online will really serve to meet those goals. I know I've gotten several letters from parents, and, and some of these letters describe students that online is just impossible. So, so to read those IEPs, whether, my question would be, are addendums going to be written to those IEPs? Or are we going to come up with ways that these students can, can be able to benefit and meet their goals and objectives on those IEPs? That's one question.
Yes, that actually is a really important question. And Dennis Rastetter has been meeting with special education staff to talk about exactly that. How we don't want to provide a blanket answer, because some students experienced great success last spring, and the students and their families feel confident that Phase 1 will meet their needs and help them work toward the goals identified on their IEPs in a very satisfactory and successful way. Other families don't feel the same way. And so, special education case managers are prepared to work with families and with students and with other special education staff on looking specifically at students' goals. And what goals can really be addressed very adequately in a virtual environment? And what goals are going to need a bit of different type of individualization? So, the answer is yes. We will be working with families and special education teams to revise certain IEPs and not others. And again, knowing that our students need us to respond to very individualized needs. And so, that communication is up and, up and going. And every family of a student on an IEP received a communication from Dennis Rastetter last week, so they know that they can be expecting their case managers to start reaching out beginning tomorrow.
Okay, and another question would be, will, will parents be able to find out their teachers before late August? As that's, many emails have come through requesting that. And so, that they can talk to other parents that are in the same classroom, maybe form or not, the pods that they're forming, whether we want them to or not. So, so that's a question. Will they be able to find out who their teachers are a little sooner than, as they've requested?
So, Don, I can answer that. That's a really great question. And I will tell you that we are working tirelessly. Our IT staff has been incredible, pulling all the numbers and building cohorts. Our principal's been patiently waiting, as have our parents. Our exec team met today and did a full alignment of those cohorts. And I think it's important, part of the reason, to explain that part of the reason it's a little bit of a moving target is, as every time a family, and certainly families have the decision that they need to make that's right for their family at the time. But every time a family moves in and out of, of an option, they skew that cohort model. So, we have to go back and make sure that we're leveled and that our, that we have the right balance of students, and that we have siblings throughout the system. And I'll use an example. The siblings throughout the system, if, if there's a student that, that becomes infected and has to be out for 14 days, and we use CDE as the guidelines, and their, their child is in another school or in another grade or in another class, that could impact a much larger grouping. So, it has taken a really long time. We are trying as quickly as possible. Our current date is August 21st, which we know is close to when school will start, and trying to get that ahead. But we want to be upfront and honest that we want the cohorts to be, the worst thing that can happen is that we tell a student, "Here's your teacher," and then, oops, this isn't your teacher. Or three weeks into school, when they're trying to transition into another phase, or we're doing something else, and we, you know, we say, "We really appreciate you liked that teacher, but now you're with somebody else," because the cohort skew was, was done incorrectly. And there's so much quality control. So, I know that's a long-winded answer, but I just want everybody to know that we're working as fast and furiously as we can. And as soon as possible, we will get that information out.
And if I can just add, this is one of the hidden complexities in regards to the logistical challenges that we're taking on. So, as a parent, you may think, "Oh, just give me the list," right? You know, typically, we get the lists out. The parents know who their kids' teachers are. This is just very different, because we are trying to prepare to go back to in-person learning, which means you have to have those cohorts established. So, we understand that, that folks want that information earlier. We're going to do the best that we can. But I also think that we just have to be honest with our community around some of the complexities that we're dealing with, that there's just things I don't think people have fully thought through when you're trying to manage all of the variables that we're trying to manage as, as we move into this school year.
Donna, is that it? Donna, do you have any more questions?
Yes, I have, just one last one. Thank you for answering these questions. They're not my questions particularly, but they're questions that, that have come through, through various emails, and parents have asked me to ask, so I feel my duty to do this. The last question is, is that parents are concerned that there's many teachers, almost 300, that are exempt. And rightly so. I realize that there's several that have underlying health conditions and are aging in our district. And that's not going to change. And so, as we try to return to in-person learning, what are we going to do? Because some of this is, the decision to go to this phase was based on staffing issues. How are we going to present this to, to our parents in the community come September 22nd, when we have this staffing shortage? That's the question. And my last one.
Thanks, Donna. A great question. And I, I've received several of these questions as well. It, it's the reason that we've established this working advisory group, to help us think through what are the logistical challenges that we have. So, and, and then, how can we understand those challenges, work together to come up with solutions that will return kids to in-person? You know, and I shared this last week. Going back into Phase 3, the way that we had it probably isn't going to happen. We're going to have to do something different. You know, we do have lots of teachers that are able, that are, that are not high-risk, that, that are able to come back. It's just working through the logistical challenges. And, and we just need some time and space to be able to do that. But, you know, I, I've, I've heard some concerns that because of this, that we're going to be in online learning all year long, or that that's just inevitable. I don't think that's inevitable. I think that we still have a lot of teachers that, that are not at high-risk, and we can make, make some really great things happen for kids in person. But it's just going to be different. So, the, the idea is to bring together a working group, use design thinking to iterate different solutions, get a broader group to understand, you know, like I shared, the hidden complexities on, you know, when people have ideas at the surface, it seems like, wow, that would make a lot of sense. But when you dig into the limitations, challenges, operation, financial, you know, health-related data, those things, those things matter. So, but we do have a great group of educators and parents that are working on this. I, I think that it's a, it's a safe bet to say we've got great people, and, and putting, putting them on this task, I think, was, was a wise move by the district. And we're looking forward to, to, to hearing what they have and the ideas they come up with, ideas that maybe we didn't even come up with originally. So, we're excited for the process.
Okay, Lisa.
I'm worried we may have skipped over Kitty.
Sorry, Kitty.
Thanks, Lisa. Yes, I have a few questions. So, when the teachers are teaching remotely, will be, will they be teaching from their schools?
So, we have been able to allow teachers to come into the buildings to do their lessons from school. In some cases, that is to the benefit. And there's been a lot of asking for that, so we're trying to honor that as much as possible. Certainly, we have very tight protocols that they have to follow through passive screening. And we're working through what, what those look like. And we've been doing them since we started some of our summer work, so.
It seems like that would be a lot easier for them. That's where all of their stuff is, so.
Right.
Other question I have is, so for students who are enrolling in Boulder Universal from out of district, how does that work?
So, we've actually always enrolled students from out of district for Boulder Universal. And Boulder Universal has a really longstanding reputation for students that do things that might be outside of the typical school. So, they may be traveling all the time or competitively, competing around the world, things like that. And many of them will join Boulder Universal, because it is a fully online school. And they do have the opportunity for virtual types of meetings if they're not able to come in face-to-face. So, they would open enroll, just similar to how we would do an open enrollment. They just don't have the level of waitlist, because it's an open process.
Right. So, is there any cap on open enrollment into Boulder Universal?
So, the way that open enrollment works at Boulder Universal is that the stu, because the students are covered through halftime PPR, we are able to provide them access to BU, so from outside of the district as well.
Okay, thanks. So, the slides went by pretty quickly, so trying to see what, what has happening at middle and high school. But at middle school, it looked like, are they, are the kids only taking four classes?
Right. So, the difference is that the students are taking their three classes with math and mathematics and language arts threaded throughout, through their online experience or face-to-face at their home. But really concentrating at both levels of secondary, on that content in a deeper, thank you very much, in a deeper way. So that you, so you can see along the top, it says math and literacy independent work. That's threaded throughout. There are blocks of time around live synchronous learning, could be an elective course. It could be a science or a social studies, or math or a language arts. The reason being, what research is beginning to tell us is that students that take a heavier load during this synchronous and online opportunity do better with less, with a deeper view at the content and, and less time, instead of a longer period of time. So, we've built in these independent work opportunities and these teacher hours and the study groups, so that things like languages and math, if that's where a student needs support or AP, can be built into those blocks of time. And as an example, for those of us that are in meetings eight or 10 hours a day, a day, this screen time is not super helpful. And even colleges have started to recommend that students take less than a heavier load so that they're able to establish successful habits in a deeper, shorter period of time without having such a heavy load in their, in their coursework.
And then, what are the blocks?
So, currently, right now, throughout secondary, we have block schedule two days a week. It's an alternating, depending on what school you're in. And what the, what we decided to do, so they have four periods a day. Let's say Wednesday, Thursday, right? So, four periods on Wednesday, four periods on Thursday. That makes up their whole eight-hour period schedule that they would experience Monday, Tuesday, Friday. All that, when we got together, we felt like it would be more beneficial for students to have that 1 through 4 for a longer period of time, have them earn their credit, so that if we transition back and forth, it's not as disruptive. And then, they'll still have that support block of time to engage in those classes that need more support. But their credit earning would not be in jeopardy based on the back and forth in and out. If we remember that in the virtual experience, when we think about having to go back home for 14 days and then come back to a classroom experience, that's very taxing on a secondary learner, because of the level of content that's done in that face-to-face experience. So, we tried to build it in a way that the students would be the most successful and have, have the most content opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see. So, then, a couple of questions about SAC. So, I saw that, you know, nobody can go in and out of SAC. How would a parent pick up their child? How would a parent pick up their child in the middle of the day? Would they just call their SAC coordinator and say, I need to come get my child at, you know, 2:00 or 10:30 or something? Renee's still on?
I'm here. Hi, Kitty.
Hi.
Hi. Yeah, so it would be the same as what we did during emergency childcare, which is we have a cell phone. And so the parents will get that cell phone number for each SAC site. And they call and say, I'm ready to pick up my kid. Or now that there's not students in the building, we could also use our iPads and we use those. So parents can actually, we have a front door monitor. Parents can actually log in their child. And then when they're ready to pick them up, they ring the front doorbell. It's really fascinating. They ring the front doorbell and they pop up on the iPad. And so the SAC person knows to escort the child out to the front entry monitor. And we're good to go. And that's per state licensing. That's not like a, we don't want families into the building. We're not allowed to have them into the building.
Okay, I understand. And just out of curiosity, since last week, have you, how how many new childcare providers have you been able to hire, if any?
Oh, so we, yes, that's a great question. And right now, those 12 sites are fully staffed. So we are ready to go and we are actively hiring. And as as we get additional staff, we will open additional sites. So we are actively hiring.
Well, last week you said you needed 83.
For all of the sites, correct, right, for all of the sites. So I can get you those numbers, but off the top of my head, I don't know how many more we need to hire.
I was just curious.
Yeah. You know, the the group we need the most is preschool, licensed preschool childcare providers. So if you know any, send them our way.
Okay, I will if I find somebody. And I think that's all I had, except for one thing I want to say that I would usually say during board communication. But if some people are only staying with us through the reentry, I want to really implore people not to pay attention to rumors. There are so many rumors and there's so much information, misinformation going around on social media and it's upsetting people. So please, if you have a question, contact the district. Don't listen to what somebody else is saying on social media, unless it's me. Okay, yeah, because I have corrected some misunderstandings, but that's it.
Okay. All right, now this time, Lisa.
Thanks. Let's see, yeah, I have a few. So Margaret, I'm wondering, with elementary school and we talk about three meetings a day, but also needing to log in once, does that mean that if my kid makes none of his meetings in a day, but he logs in one time to see, saw that he's present?
No, it's going to be a combination of all of those because it is going to be active. So our goal would be that students are connecting with their teacher on a regular basis up to three times a day and participating in their work. So we're trying as much as possible to build in that level of consistency.
And you said that there is some some room for flexibility, too, that if my kid is 20 minutes late or 30 minutes late and it doesn't happen often, that's unlikely to be a tardy in the system or is it still that strict?
So I'll be really honest, we haven't even talked about tardies. We're just trying to get kids to go to school in a virtual environment. So our goal would be that we want to work with families. We understand the nuances of what happens, but we want to assure families that we're running school so that they they feel comfortable about the fact that their students have somewhere to connect to, be with, connect with a teacher and do their learning.
So given that the absence is maybe more of an art than a science, are we going to be communicating with families before remarking absences and talking about what's going on with them?
Absolutely. So our goal is that the communication will go out tomorrow to families around those attendance pieces as teachers are coming in the next couple of days. And then through the training that we're going forward with, we'll be discussing, what does that look like to be a combination for attendance? We want to make sure that our students are connected to the learning. We want to make sure that we have a system in place so that if a student does need support for whatever reason, whether technologically or there's something else going on, we can do that support. So we need to have a body of evidence that is not simply just, hey, my face is here and I'm here, I'm present. That's not what we're looking for. So I would say that that will be happening over the next couple of weeks and that there will be scenarios where we have to kind of readjust. And we would ask families to please reach out to us as things happen so that we can make sure that we're adjusting to our community's needs as we move forward.
Okay. During this specials block, what kind of supplies are we expecting our families to have on hand for art and music?
Great question. So right now, we're working on a list of at-home supplies. We also have the crayons program, which I can't think of the rest of the name right now, but I'm sure Robyn knows, through Impacts for Education. And they also have provided the supplies that will be needed. So we're trying to model what home supply would look like for art, music, PE. And we've got a list together that teachers have have in the past, over the summer, put together that we're working on putting out as well. And that will be coming shortly. Our goal is to not overwhelm families. We have like 10 pages of communication every time we send something out.
Okay. And then what I'm wondering about the most is I look at a schedule for nine to three and I think about if I'm the parent of a kindergarten through second grader, what does that mean for me? Am I, how much time do I need to give to that six-hour process? One thing that I think was frustrating in the spring is, I think we all know the things that are frustrating. But one thing that worked well is for all of us who are working, you know, we sort of had the flexibility to just do what we need to do and then worry about getting school done. I'm a little nervous when I imagine what it means for me to work eight or nine or 10 hours a day while my kid is also having six hours of learning that require my constant attention.
Yes, and I think that that level, so I'll just say that it's crayons to calculators. Thank you, Randy Barber. And I think that that level of flexibility would will come. We do want our students to be connected to the school day. But, you know, I'm a working mom and I totally understand the need to have that level of flexibility. So we will work through that process on individual basis, on an individual basis. One of the benefits of having the SAC program and other programs that are partnering as we're moving along is that they've already said, you know, if you've got to go to work, we will have these safe places for you to be, your students to be. And then we will work with families as, you know, as we have to. I have a 10-year-old, like, you know, that's not going to work for him to to do that. So we'll have to figure out ways to keep students connected and at the same time, find the flexibility with families.
I appreciate that. And maybe I admit, I I know with little kids, we have to keep changing what they're doing a lot to keep them engaged. But I would also point out as a parent that those transitions from one thing to the next are the hardest thing to manage with small kids while working. But every time they're moving from one activity into another, it's 35 minutes of having to make that happen. And then if it's only for 15 minutes of work, you know, the whole thing is is difficult. So I wonder if maybe we can just think about ways that we can minimize transitions from screen to not screen while also including enough changes of activities that kids can stay engaged.
Absolutely, and I'll give a huge shout out to our PKK program. So Kim Bluman and her team have done an amazing job. And that communication will also be going out tomorrow in the parent letter that gives some idea around expectations and what that looks like and those transition pieces. It's a two-page document that will be super helpful for families and certainly will continue to update that moving forward.
Okay, thank you so much. I admit you have me in fully in nervous parent mode tonight, which brings me to Renee, and I apologize in advance, Renee, I have a few questions. So my first one is when I was looking online at the setup, it looked like maybe the only options were Monday through Friday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday. And I'm wondering if that's the case. I'm hoping it's not. I'm hoping we have flexibility for parents to register for whatever days they need childcare for.
That is correct. So there's a full day or full week option, which is four or five days a week. And then the two or the three-day option now. Right now, it's fine. Parents can choose what they need. However, when we get to an in-person learning mode, whatever that looks like, we need to make sure that we're aligned to the days that the kids are in school so that we can maintain the required number of cohorts for per public health data. So that's the caveat.
Okay, but right now, when I'm signing my right now, when I'm signing my kids up, I can sign them up for any days that I need as I'm trying to put together a mishmash of different care providers.
Absolutely, correct.
Okay. This is a little question, but I'm wondering, will the sibling discount be an online function or will folks have to call up to make that work?
No, it should be on the registration site for you. And let me get the specifics of that because we have someone just in charge of registration. And so I'm happy to get their specifics and get back to you.
Okay. We're charging by the month, is that correct?
Correct.
So I could change my schedule at the end of any month, but not in the middle?
We work with folks and in all honesty, we work with people. We know that this is an unprecedented time. And so we try to get the month at a time so that we can do staffing, right? So we know that we're having the right number of people on site and we can guarantee that. And we're in ratio because we also need to maintain ratios. And it's a 15 to one ratio for school-aged kids. So having said, having said that, we are also really flexible. So if you or anyone else has a concern or your your life changes, we know that happens. Just call us and reach out and we will work with your family.
Okay, thank you. And I see we prorated August. Do we anticipate prorating months with holidays as well?
So that that rate is already in, so we factor in all of the days and then we divide. And again, I can get you the specific formula that my operations manager uses. But yeah, the holidays are taken into consideration.
Sorry, I'm not sure I understood. So I'm wondering in December, am I still paying as much as I did in November and as much as I do in January or is it a lesser fee during December?
Let me get the specifics to you so I don't misspeak.
Okay, I'm just trying, obviously daycare's work one way, but I think we're doing something that's kind of never been done. So I'm not sure what standards to expect.
We are, and I'll get the specifics to you.
Thank you, just a few more. I wanted to mention, you said you only have 200 families registered. And I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page if that's because most of us haven't registered yet because we haven't, we haven't been able to, right? So that we should expect probably a big increase in folks registering for for daycare?
The registrations opened on Thursday. So I'm, you know, there's only been a few days and things have been evolving. So I anticipate that more people will register.
Okay, when I went in on Thursday, it looked like the the K-5 program was ready, but that the preschool program was still set to our old rates and still only had Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, 30, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday through Friday options. And I'm not sure that we communicated that things are open either.
Okay, so there is a communication going out tomorrow is my understanding. And I put a blurb in there with additional information. So again, I will make sure that we're all in alignment and I will get all that information back to you.
Okay. So then is the preschool schedule as it's up now, is that changing or is that staying static at the three options of Monday through Friday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday?
No, it's it's the same as the SAC. So you can do a full-time rate, which is four or five days during the week. You can do a part-time three-day, you pick your days. And you can do a part-time two-day, you pick your days.
Okay, so just to point out, when I, I think I said, when I tried to get on yesterday, that wasn't the case. So we may need to, just a few more. I I'm worried about what it means to drop off a two- to five-year-olds when we have these pandemic procedures. I know you've been doing it all summer, so I wonder if you could talk a little bit about what that looks like.
For sure. And so at every site, we have a front door monitor. And that front door monitor has the iPad that I was explaining to Kitty. And then we have a thermometer to do a temperature check for folks. And then we ask a couple other health-related data. And that's all on that in that handbook as to what we ask and what we do in the specific protocol. And again, that's that's open to everybody on the website. Families, and this is a licensing thing, they can't come inside. But what we do is try to have, you know, welcome folks and that front door monitor is very warm and welcoming. We get have kids escorted into the room that they're supposed to be in during the day. Last, and during emergency childcare, we also had little videos that we sent to families. And so I'm hoping that that will continue where at least people can see what the room looks like. We don't show children's faces or anything for privacy reasons, of course. But I'm hoping that that will continue. And we know, we're very well aware that parents, they're little, you know, you're dropping off your little baby. So we we do our best to let parents in without being physically present and in by sending updates and pictures without children's faces to families on a regular basis.
Thank you, that's great. I think specifically, too, what I'm worrying about is what it's like for a three-year-old to be dropped off with somebody they've never met to a space they've never seen who's wearing a mask. And just how frightening that experience is and what that transition looks like.
Right, and and like I said, I, you know, I would encourage all of you to come and visit us, too. Just a little plug because when I I had reservations, too, at first, I'm like, how are we doing this? But our staff is so sensitive to this fact. And we have directors for the infant toddler site. One of the managers is there all the time. And so we're really, we're, we understand families' hesitations and reservations. And we, I I felt like from the spring, the team did a fantastic job. And I really would encourage you all to come and visit, not inside, but at least to see kind of how we do things and meet the staff because they're just wonderful.
Thank you. And we do outdoor time during all of these programs, right?
Wait, did you ask that question? I'm sorry. Can you just repeat your question?
Yes, I said all of these programs have outdoor time, right? It's not just them in their in their rooms with a teacher on the computer?
No. And again, this is one of those things about being a licensed childcare program. We are required to do quiet time. We are required to have a certain amount of hours outside. And it's, you know, the weather is nice and so kids will be outside. We can go on the playground, we can do all that great stuff, kids can take nature walks. So as much as possible, we can get kids outside. And also recognize we got to balance that with giving them access to the schoolwork as well.
And for kids who don't want to do school, are the educators in the rooms required to make them? Or is that up to the kid and the educators are there to help?
We work with the families. So it's really, they'll have a space because they do need a space for quiet time and homework in a regular licensed after-school program, they would have homework time. So we would still have that time. But again, we we really do, our team prides itself on knowing the families and knowing what the families need and working with individual families to meet their needs.
Okay, I'm almost done. I'm wondering for a family that's dropping off a special education student and hoping that they'll have a learning experience, what kinds of things we could let those families know to feel more comfortable with that experience?
We are ADA compliant. So we will, we provide all the accommodations and supports under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And they can, you know, what I would say is that we have from years and years past been able to accommodate the vast majority of all of our students who need that childcare.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if this is a question, Renee, for you or for Rob, but I'm wondering what discipline looks like and what it would take for a child to be asked not to return and just sort of what we're doing to make sure that this program is in line with the work we've been doing in BBSD around discipline.
I can answer that. Okay. So we have behavior intervention plans. We work really closely with the principal. We work really closely with the school staff. We have access to the students' health needs and discipline records and all that. We have access to everything in Infinite Campus. And so we do our very best to accommodate kids. And that means if the child needs a behavior plan or something so that we're all on the same page, the family and the staff and the school is on the same page about what's needed, that we do that. We, I I can't say, you know, in in, I haven't worked here very long, but in working with my team, they don't typically kick kids out, which is something that I, again, I'm really proud of. And I've seen those plans in place and I've seen them work with families. And I feel confident that the vast majority of kids, we are able to meet their needs.
Thank you, Renee. You've gone a long way to slay my fears about dropping my kids off soon. I have one last question for for Sam, if she's still around. I'm wondering how the parents and teachers and principals were selected for the committee?
Yeah, great question. So for the parent members, we went with the three advisory groups that exist to BBSD right now, DAC, DPC, and the Latino Parent Advisory Council. And we asked for volunteers from the chairs of DAC and DPC and then asked RE to help identify someone from the Latino Parent Council who would be willing to serve in that capacity. And then for our principals, we we really just, we were aiming to get a diversity of principals in terms of what grade levels their school represented and geographically, as well as making sure that we had at least one bilingual school.
Okay, thank you. And that'll do it for me, thanks so much.
Okay, Stacy.
Hi, just thank you for the information also. I only have two quick questions, I think. To follow up on Kitty's question about the middle school and high school schedules, the high school schedule didn't appear to be a block schedule. It appeared to be Monday through Friday, only four periods. And that hasn't been communicated. I know it'll be communicated tomorrow. But that information has already hit the streets. And I've been hearing a lot of unhappy parents about that. But that information has already hit the streets and I've been hearing a lot of unhappy parents about that. So I was wondering if maybe you could speak to that a little bit and how it's going to work with having some courses, you know, four or eight weeks on, eight weeks off, especially with having to take an AP exam at the end and how that all works?
Yeah, I absolutely can, uh, respond. That's a great question and certainly we'll talk to families as we move through. What we know is that, um, the stress of changing classes, uh, in a transition. So if you think about, this is what I would share with families. If you think about the fact that your child could be coming in for two weeks and then have to go home for two weeks because their, their cohort or their group is on a pan, is on watch or there's been an infection, that level of consistency and inconsistency really is detrimental to the long-term impact of retention of learning. So by doing longer, by doing shorter periods of time, which if we think about micro schooling, there's lots of conversations right now about micro schooling. You, um, you study the topic deeper and many, as a matter of fact, right before the board meeting, we were talking about how some colleges have quarter systems or trimester systems it, where you have a shorter period of time with longer blocks of time for that learning acquisition and then that earning of credit. It doesn't negatively impact as, as much that cycle of to earn credit, I need a whole semester overtime. So for those students that have AP classes and have world language classes that already have a system and a schedule like that where they're doing smaller chunks of time in quarters or trimesters with, uh, with, with longer periods of time during a week. What they do is use that study period that you see there or those teacher hours for study groups to do the AP prep or to, for an AP exam, that's the example that you shared specifically. They would do an AP prep, um, for those, for that coursework specifically aligned to the assessment. Similar that we would do if you were, had, had an SAT prep or an PSAT prep or something like that, or ACT. Those have been actually found to be very successful because typically students, you know, even in my own high school principal experience, students that have that extra component of that study time are really, they've already acknowledged the content. It's really studying for the exam portion and the questions that are be related that are, that are out there essentially. The other pieces that has, has come up is world language. So students that are studying world language, how do they stay consistent over time in their language acquisition? And part of that is again, that study time, those study groups. Many students, you know, you finish a course, you don't need the course again, you're not interested in going back to the course. You don't need a study group for it, right? You've earned the credit and you've moved on. For those students that that's their area of passion or their connection or what they plan to stay connected to over time, we, um, they, they'd be provided through those study groups and through that time. And as an example, and, um, one of our high schools has this already built into the system so that you can reach out to your teacher and say, I want to set up a group or I want to do a study piece. Um, we would be capitalizing on that opportunity so that, the concern is that students will, will not be able to earn longevity over time, that credit, um, if we're back in and out all the time. It really breaks up the system. And we're following the models of existing schedules throughout the, throughout the world, but throughout the country, as well as feedback that we've gotten about kids being to, being able to acquire those credits, uh, in an appropriate time. Certainly I can answer more questions related to that and, um, as we move forward. And I know it's a transition, uh, but we also recognize that 14 weeks in and out, that lack of consistency will not lead to deep levels of learning.
Will that, um, will that schedule proposal be outlined in the email that everyone's getting tomorrow?
Yes.
For high school students?
Yes, and each of the high school principals have details around the specifics for their building and what that looks like. So definitely reaching out to your buildings once that, um, that email comes out, if you still have questions.
Okay, great. And then the other question is mostly related to high school, I think. Are, is every single course going to be able to be delivered online? For example, racket sports or design tech where you would use a 3D printer? Are we able to deliver every single course that a student may have chosen?
So at this point, what we're doing, I, I would say, yes, we are. Um, we, there certainly are courses when we think about the specificity around a 3D printer, that, that component being sent to a 3D printer, so the student developing what that product might be and then sending that through their instructor so that the instructor is then doing the 3D printing in the building. Um, there might be times, we would certainly aspire that the kids would be able to come in at some point and do that 3D printing so they get that experience themselves. When we think about racket sports, I will tell you that I think our PE teachers are an incredible group of people, have done an amazing job of planning and finding ways for students to be able to practice those, um, activities and sports, you know, the, the skills that they need in a way that they can do it independently, they can do it virtually, they can do it, um, watching each other. And then if we have the opportunity to come back to, to a face-to-face model, certainly would be able to do that. Uh, at this point, I haven't heard of a class that we're not able to offer without, you know, certainly some modification, um, if needed. Uh, and I would say that if we do find one, then we would hold that off. Uh, typically it would be a, an elective that maybe we offer in a second semester and off year. Um, but as of right now, we haven't heard of any. And I'll tell you that all the credit is due to the teachers who are saying, this is how we develop this, this is how we modify so that our kids have the opportunity and experience.
Great, thank you. That's all from me. Thanks, everyone, for your hard work, appreciate it.
Okay, and Stacy, thank you for asking. I also had a question about the high school schedule since we received some feedback. And I'll wait until we all receive communication tomorrow. But, um, I'm just wondering if you can send the communication about preschool, high school, middle school and elementary school to all the board members? Since, uh, many of our board members don't have children in the system. And they'll want to see what that communication looks like so we can understand it. And I'll be honest, I'm still a little confused on the high school schedule. So I, I look forward to the email. Um, I did have a question about PE and sports. And I'm wondering if we're starting to think about, um, offering waivers for certain requirements for high school graduation as it, as people had planned to play sports and those sports aren't going to happen and they may conflict, um, you know, how should parents be nervous about meeting some of those high school graduation requirements or do we feel that we'll be working with families?
I would say confidently that we'll be working with families. I will say that regardless of a pandemic, we often work with families when there are, um, times or issues or concerns or crisis that come up. The difference I would say now is that it's a system-wide issue versus an individual crisis that happens with a family. I'm super confident, having been here for about, oh, two and a half years now, uh, that, uh, that our principals really, and our counselors really work closely with families around those circumstances. We did, the 2021 graduation requirement, uh, was put on hold. We had that notification and we informed the board of that, I believe, two meetings ago. So certainly there's some flexibility there. And, uh, we'll continue to work and monitor all of our students. We have watch lists, not in a negative way. We have lists that students that are, that may be struggling, the re-engagement team kind of checks in with them on a regular basis and their families, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay, and when we think about the cohorts for the elementary level in particular, will we continue to be looking to have diverse cohorts? Meaning that children learning second languages and children with special needs will be interspersed? Or we'll be looking to cluster kids in groups for, um, support delivery?
Right, so the, great question. So the cohort delivery was based on, uh, a variety of factors. The first being sibling cohort or similar households, um, based on cohort break, breakdown. The second was balance of special education and, um, CLDE needs, as well as the flexibility, um, based on the cohort model of where students were, um, on legal documentation and things like that. Because that's another factor that we also have to consider.
Okay, and then, um, since we are doing a, a fairly large childcare effort and we'll have lots of kids involved in our schools, which, you know, it's hard not to say, wow, that sounds like school, let's just make it school. Um, could we get updates on transmission rates for the, um, school age childcare? So we can get a sense of how it's working, since it will be somewhat simulating school?
Yes, um, so we, we provide all those, all that data to county health as well. Um, and I'm happy to send that over, um, to Cabinet that they can pass it along to you guys.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, that's all I have. Did anyone else have a follow-up question that they wanted to? Kitty?
Yes, um, asking about sports reminded me that I'm curious how performing arts are going to be handled.
Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button. So, um, I don't know if it's been shared with the board, it may be shared with, uh, this Friday. A really beautiful piece that Aubrey, um, Yay, our coordinator for, for our, um, art music PE and the music teachers in the district did an incredible job exemplifying what we would be able to do with our choirs and our music performing programs. Uh, it was a compilation of, um, Lean On Me that was done throughout the district. And it was really incredible, certainly will share it. And I think that's a great example of what we can accomplish in these programs and in, in these systems. I mean, we can do, it, it's really, and I'll just plug, like, to watch what people have done in this pandemic, to bring the right things for kids, um, as often as they do, is really something to be incredibly proud of. So, um, there's a sample of the video and, and perfect timing.
Yeah, thanks, I saw some, oops, never mind.
Okay, uh, any other afterthoughts or other questions? Richard?
Just a quick question, and that's in reference to the learning pods. Uh, can you, Margaret or Rob explain what, what, where we're at with these learning pods? I'm hearing, uh, through social media that some parents are doing learning pods. Uh, they're getting organized to do learning pods. Uh, and I believe I heard you talk a little bit about, uh, learning, if, if, if that's happening, there may be, you know, learning pods are good for the wealthy, but they're also good for the poor?
So, uh, I'll answer the, with the information that we've got right now. So we're, there are a variety of groups in the community that are, um, connecting for a variety of reasons. So some of those reasons are for, uh, things like micro schooling, where they are, um, they are coming together to do certain STEM projects or certain connections or certain, um, partnerships. Um, some of our local community, uh, businesses have done things like open spaces for our gymnasts or our, um, artists or whatever within their community, uh, within their businesses. That's another option of groups coming together, essentially starting from the fact that families, if we are in a, in a virtual situation and are not able to get into our school age care, which we know they, they will be able to or into another care, may need to leave their children someplace. The third, uh, the third is a group of families in, and actually it's happened across the front range where through Facebook, as one of the examples, families have come together and said, I have a seven-year-old or I have a 10-year-old or I have a 12-year-old that we, it's social interaction and schooling opportunities, is there a family out there that wants to get together? Now, in some cases, they may be hiring somebody, in some cases, a parent may be supporting that. Um, you know, I'm home from work and I can take three kids. There's a variety of, um, systems and ways that that's been organized. In some of, in some of our other communities, it's been done in an, in an informal way where, you know, they all live in the same neighborhood and the family's going to take on Monday and this family's going to take on Tuesday. So with all of those varieties, we have been able to reach out and connect with different groups. One of the groups we've been in contact with on a weekly basis has done a really nice job of, um, continuing to update what we put on the face, on our BBSD page and, um, trying to figure out ways to provide support for those groups that are coming together so that they are in partnership with us. We recognize that our students, we, we'll have some kids throughout the district that would otherwise be home by themselves. We recognize, you know, myself included, two, two working family people in the household. And, um, you know, where do, where do our children go if not to after school care or some kind of other option? So we have been working with them, we've been able to acquire, we've been able to contact them about the lists of students that exist. Um, we don't have specific names at this point because obviously they're trying to keep the privacy of their families. Um, but it's absolutely a volunteer process and, and they're working through it. Now, some of them are paying for other options. You know, public education is absolutely free. And we want to work with, uh, our families so that they have the best support that they can, knowing that we have the five days a week of instruction and, and school and hopefully building, listening to what our community has said. We've built out schedules, we've built out protocols and procedures and support for families. Uh, and they will find that to be an asset, um, and that the support for their students will come more in a general care situation and we can help with that as well. We will be talking with that group again tomorrow. And I'm super grateful for them, I just want to, you know, they've just been amazing to work with.
So, so if you have a, a group of, uh, families in a particular neighborhood that don't have the means to pay for anything, is, is the district going to do anything to support that particular group of parents?
Sure, so we have our, we have our SAC program. We, the, the support that we're providing for the pod situation, um, we worked with our Latino Parent Council to talk about, um, what are things that they need for support? What are the ways that we can reach out through, um, our families to see who needs what support? Uh, the, the difference, I would say, within the pod conversation is that, um, those families are a variety of needs. In some cases, they are paying and in some cases, they don't have the means to pay and we're supporting them as well. So, uh, yes, so short answer, yes, we will provide as much support as we possibly can. Um, and after school care is a great op, uh, option for what that looks like and built around the neighborhoods.
So if I know the particular neighborhood or three or four neighborhoods that want to do something like that, who do they reach out to you, to you or?
Sure, I would absolutely have them reach out to me. I'll share, you know, an interesting story. I had a, um, I had a conversation with one of our Latino families who, I said, well, how are you, how are you working through what the care looks like and do, can we support? And, and, um, she said, we've got it all organized, we're, you know, we, we're good. We'll let you know if we, if we need the help because we've got a family system and we've got the neighborhood support and we're all working together. Very similarly to the pods that are working, the difference is that it's been a much more informal process than the pods, um, that we're all talking about on social media. So absolutely have them reach out to us, to me, and, and we'll work through how to support them.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, everyone else good? All right, um, thank you, so, yes, there you go, Donna.
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, in comment to what Richard had to say, I, I do recognize, and I, I think that most of our parents listen. And Margaret has some great ideas, but just, this wasn't a Facebook, uh, thing, it's not a rumor. I spoke directly to a teacher that retired just in May. And being hired by pods of people going together at $75 an hour, four hours a day, four days a week, to run a program of neighborhood kids. So I, I'm hoping, and, and I think every parent out there is hoping to get back to in-person learning as soon as possible because this is just increasing the gaps in what parents are creatively. And I pat them on the back for coming up to do this. But there's a lot of people that can't afford it, they can't, even though they don't qualify for FRL for daycare, they, they are having to reach deep in their pockets to, that money that was going to go towards other things to, to find some kind of daycare so they can go back to work. And I know that, that we're trying to solve all these problems, but as much as we try, there's still parents out there struggling. That's all, thank you.
Okay, um, all right, well, thank you, Dr. Anderson. And our next item is public participation. Uh, board members, is everyone good to go ahead with public participation? Then we'll take a break afterward or something? Okay, all right, so, um, public participation, of course, is now virtual. And, uh, we had asked people if they wanted to speak, to sign up prior to the meeting. And, and you would have done that by contacting Laura Schaefer, the board secretary. And then she'll put you on a list and then, uh, and work with you to understand how to participate via the Zoom meeting room. Um, we recognize the value of public comment. And we ask that people who address the board can find your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district, to limit your presentation to two minutes. And to recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Your remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes pre-K through 12th grade students. Um, you will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining, and Laura will be holding that. When you have 10 seconds, you will see an orange card. At that point, we ask you to wrap up your comments. Um, if you don't finish your comments, uh, please send an email. We do read all of our emails, I continue to read every single one of my emails, and I think we all do. Um, so, so don't, just in case you didn't get all of your thoughts expressed, uh, you can also communicate that way. So our first speaker is, um, Michael Guiderelli.
Superintendent Anderson, members of the school board, administrative staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Guiderelli and I've been a school bus driver with Boulder Valley for almost seven years. Although you can't see my face, you'll remember me from two years ago requesting video cameras being installed on the buses. The drivers are thankful for your approval of installing cameras, what a success they have proven to be. The cameras have resulted in a significant reduction of negative incidences. We are also grateful to have been paid our base hours for the months of this past April and May while we were away from our jobs. Tomorrow, August 12th, will be the five-month anniversary of the last day we bus students to school and home. And while Boulder Valley Admin- And while Boulder Valley administrators have been finding ways to educate our young people in the safest environment possible, we feel that there has been a lack of targeted communication to transportation personnel. Many transportation employees were not able to obtain summer employment at Boulder Valley as they traditionally have due to COVID-19. While this was disappointing, the next disappointment was to first hear that Boulder Valley slipped the beginning of school one week, from August 19 to August 26, and then would begin the school year using remote learning at least through September 22. For transportation employees, this news only escalated their anxiety because we were not being communicated to regarding our job status. Fears of layoffs and firings entered our thoughts. But if Boulder Valley thinks hard about this option, they may conclude that letting go of transportation employees will cost them more in the long run versus repurposing us until the district reintroduces in-person learning. Finding and training people to become school bus drivers is a daunting task. Also, there is increasing competition for these candidates. For example, our neighboring St. Green Valley School District guarantees their drivers 30 hours per week at comparable wages to ours. Boulder Valley only guarantees drivers 20 hours a week. That could make a difference of $1,000 a month for a driver with several years of experience. Our candidates must first pass a comprehensive physical exam, then a Colorado Department of Transportation background check, and then submit to drug testing, which is not required to become a teacher. Assuming a candidate survives these hurdles, they will take approximately five to six and a half weeks of training before receiving an assignment. A number don't make it this far. Transportation employees are among the most loyal employees Boulder Valley has. We are very dedicated to our students. Transportation employees are flexible when performing their jobs, and have many talents that can be used throughout the district while the school conducts remote learning. For example, I am currently working with a minimally-staffed grounds crew this summer. We spent two to three weeks working at Boulder High, preparing it for graduation week in July. We received multiple compliments for how good the school looked. In spite of all the work we accomplished, there is so much more that needs to be done at Boulder High, let alone the other 55 campuses in the district. Transportation employees can be of great value working with maintenance and custodial crews, childcare, deliveries, tutoring, et cetera. We are open to meaningful work assignments while receiving our appropriate transportation staff wage. In summary, during these challenging times, we all need to show more grace, flexibility, and patience to each other, and to understand and appreciate each other's role in weathering this latest challenge. We ask that you help transportation employees help you through these challenging times. Thank you.
Okay. Sean Charmidero? Is Sean here?
He is. He needs to unmute.
Hi. Hi, my name is Sean Charmidero. I have been a BVSD bus driver for over six years. The reason I'm here is to express some concerns about the way BVSD has communicated with and treated its classified employees. This summer, we have received only four emails, and two of those were for all employees. On July 22nd, we received an email that we would be going back to school under Phase Three. Many drivers were left to wonder what that would mean for them. On July 27th, we received an email stating that bid was tentatively scheduled for August 19th and 20th. However, there was no real information about what routes would look like, how many hours we could work, and what we would be expected to do in terms of safety protocols. When asked for answers to these questions, we received no response from management. On August 4th, we learned that we were going back at Phase One. As a driver, no in-person learning means no work for us. On August 7th, we learned that the district was working to find meaningful work assignments for the 400-plus staff members whose positions would not be utilized under Phase One. But again, no real details as what that would look like. I understand the challenges the administration is facing. However, in the almost six months of living with COVID, BVSD has put together a five-phase plan for teachers, students, and community, but does not seem to fully take into account their support staff under these phases. So my concerns are, why was there no plan in place for the classified employees under all phases? For most drivers, our income and benefits are critical, and even a slight disruption in them can be catastrophic. Going forward, I hope that there would be more frequent and detailed communication about what safety precautions will be taken to ensure the health of support staff, concrete information about how our income and benefits will be protected under each phase, and having information in a timely manner so that each person can make decisions that are best for them. Thank you.
Okay. Philippe Joe Mason?
I've been a bus driver since 2017, and I've spoken to you before. While we understand we are not a priority during Phase One, bus drivers will be an integral part of operations when the district moves back to less restrictive phases. I took this job for security. I've stayed with it because I love the students. In the absence of both those things in Phase One, there are three things I ask of the district. The first is communication. Sean discussed the dearth of info specific to bus drivers. While we understand the reluctance to announce plans or scenarios that are constantly changing, sharing such possibilities reassures us that each type of employee is being considered. Most district employees know how much they will work, not bus drivers and aides. The more lead time you give us to find and build supplemental income around district needs, the more likely we can stay on. We can only do that if you outline how you may or may not use us in each phase. The second suggestion was from Michael about repurposing drivers. Again, we need at least an outline soon. Given the large number of Unit C employees to be retasked, and the possibility we may stay in Phase One a long time, we may also be looking at furloughs or reduction in, in force. In that case, the third thing that bus drivers need is benefits, particularly paid health insurance. Consider it a prolonging of the district's usual summer expenses. You pay drivers benefits through the summer so that you can minimize the cost of training new ones in the fall. Whether during furloughs or not, one of your best ways to retain drivers is paid benefits. Based on what I haven't heard so far, I am applying to other jobs. The district paid thousands to train and provide me with a commercial driver's license. Many employers are recruiting CDL holders during this pandemic. I want to stay with the district, but at a minimum, I need benefits. I'd suffer through the gig economy again if it means I can rejoin my students, but I won't navigate this pandemic without insurance. Please tell us by the end of this week if I'll have that with BVSD. Thanks for your time and all you're doing for our community.
Okay. Sophie Dellinger?
Hello. My name is Sophie Dellinger, and I am a recent graduate from Fairview High School. I have been working alongside Beatriz Sanchez, and we were both involved in the revision of the new Title IX policy, ACR 2, being proposed to the board today. I would like to thank Kathleen Sullivan and Jordan Gatto for their willingness to accept our concerns and comments that were brought up at a board meeting back on May 26. We are greatly appreciative that after months of work, BVSD is finally headed in the direction of change. While the Title IX policies are being improved and refined, there is one key aspect that is missing from this process, and that is accountability. While working with Beatriz, I've always referred to Title IX policy as being the foundation for sexual violence prevention to be built on. While in essence this is true, I forgot that there is an even deeper and more pervasive layer that lies underneath Title IX policy, and that is the relationship of trust between students, parents, and the BVSD administration. Title IX at BVSD has been broken for many years, from unanswered questions and corruption involving the previous superintendent Bruce Messenger, to the influx of mishandled allegations of sexual violence, a lack of sexual violence prevention, and a broken Title IX policy. A quote from a Boulder Weekly article in 2017 called "Why BVSD Can't Move Forward With Its Past" by Joel Dyer sums up the cyclical issue BVSD has faced. You don't get to move forward with BVSD until you deal more responsibly with questions from the past. The same law firm is still giving advice to the same board that is now deciding who will lead BVSD into the future. If you want your new policies to work, you have to own up and take accountability for the damage that the previous Title IX legislation did to many staff and students within your institution. Bringing in a new Title IX coordinator and a new system of accountability, along with an acknowledgement and apology to the BVSD community, is the only way to repair the trust that has been broken. Thank you.
Okay. Kia Solari?
Yes, hello. Members of the board, if there was ever a time the public education system failed its children, it is now. The expectation to have parents near the demands of the school day is both unacceptable and unreasonable. I am not a teacher, and although I have a master's degree in education, it is not incumbent upon me, a parent, to fulfill the full-time role of my child's teacher. The expectation to have an entire digital platform for any student is a challenge, and for those students with disabilities, it is unconscionable. As an essential worker and a professional, I am not afforded the luxury of choosing whom I care for, the luxury of working remotely, the luxury of saying my working conditions are unsafe, or the luxury of being paid if I do not come to work. I cannot delegate my duties. As a nurse, I risk my health and my safety to care for and educate others. I do not work in a hospital, but a jail. Crowded conditions, poor airflow, lack of social distancing, bodily fluids, and minimal PPE. And while some of you may think that this is what I signed up for, nobody signed up for this, COVID. And yet, educators and their school districts are being allowed to dictate where and how they teach, and whom their teaching duties will fall upon. Why? Some of these educators, shirking their professional obligations in the name of safety, are traveling, eating out, attending gathered protests, and sending their children to summer camps, playdates, and sports. Children have the right to a free, appropriate, public education, and parents who are comfortable sending their children back to school should be extended the opportunity to do so. Essential services by their very nature cannot be performed remotely. Unless the school board is prepared to argue that educating our children is not an essential service, then teachers should be required to report to work to provide in-person learning to our children five days a week. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes public participation. Our next item is board communication. I thought we could start with Richard.
Thank you, Tina. And I want to thank all the speakers, Michael, Sean, Joe, Sophie, and Kia, for their, for their comments tonight. The, I guess, a couple of comments that I have as it relates to the bus drivers. I know that us drivers a year ago were like a critical commodity that we couldn't fulfill in our district. And my, my concern right now is, how many are we going to lose? And what's the, what's the future hold in terms of filling positions if we lose them? And what can we do? What can we do to make sure that, that we don't get placed between a rock and a hard place come post-pandemic, and, and we return back to some level of normalcy, and all our buses are running, and all of that? So I've got some concerns around that. And the other comment that I want to make has to do a lot with the advisory group that will be looking at the information and bringing back information to us September 22nd as it relates to Phase Two plus. And the, and for me, again, I, I need to bring up this whole issue about some of the partners that we have out in the community that are willing to partner, and I didn't see any reference to any of those groups being represented in, in the advisory group. So I'm wondering if, if, if the district is, is really, really serious about doing something around the whole community partnership plan, and, and where are we with that? And are we going to get to some solution at some point in time? I know that during the hiring freeze, we put the hiring of a partnership director aside, but I think we lifted that hiring freeze, so I'm wondering if that's going to come back. Those are my comments, but I really appreciate the, the remarks made by the bus drivers and Sophie and Kia.
Okay. Kathy?
I don't have any comments other than to say thank you to the bus drivers, and to the student, and to the parent. These are really challenging times, and we really appreciate you taking the time to come and share your concerns, and I think if we all pull together, we'll figure out a way to get through this with as best we can. So thank you, everybody, for sharing your emails, sharing your concerns, and sharing your time, and let's all just hang together. I don't know what else to say. Thanks.
Donna?
Yeah, I'll try to make this really short, but I do appreciate the bus drivers coming in to talk to us about that issue. I think it's an important thing that we have to consider, and I wanted that, to say that. Before I said, I, I had told some parents that I would try to speak up and be their voice a little bit tonight in my communications, and I've explained to several parents that have written me independently emails, independent emails, and then also people that have talked to me independently, as well as neighbors. I'm one of the board members on this board that has the most experience teaching PK in our district, within our district, for over two decades. I, I know what it's like to fully engage a student, to be able to give immediate positive reinforcement when a student learns a new concept, but to also be able to see when a student is struggling and come along beside them before they give up. This is hard to do online. If a student begins to practice a newly introduced concept wrong, then that habit can become quickly fossilized, causing many problems in his or her future academic growth. Online learning does not offer such opportunities as well as the opportunity to fully know a student and form strong, solid relationships. This board spent many board meetings in the spring and fall of 2019, discussing not only data privacy, but also discussing limits on screen time for our students. And, and now we're turning to the online learning. I think a lot of parents are afraid, and I said that I would say this, that, that this September 22nd is a carrot being dangled to keep students, people from dropping out of our district, because it's so soon to the October 3rd count that we have to provide to the state for funding. I don't want our parents to leave, but I know of some that have already left, gone to private schools, and, and state online schools that have been in the process longer. I just want to say and encourage the, the parents and students to hang with us, but I know that they're, they're really sitting on this precipice now of, are, are we being told the truth? So we need to be transparent, and I hope that we can get information out before September 22nd on, on what we're planning for the rest of the year. So that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Kitty?
Yes, I just have a couple of things to say. I want to congratulate Erin Greenwood at Platt, who teaches at Platt Middle School. She won the Presidential Award, excuse me, for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching, and I saw that in the paper today, so I thought I'd give her a shout out. And I virtually attended the Impact on Education fundraiser, the Together We Grow, and I know Andrew was there because I heard his name mentioned. I don't know if any, anybody else here was there, but Kathy, good. But, so you know, they raised over $230,000, and $200,000 was the goal. And I was just so impressed. They started out with asking for $25,000 donations, and I think two people did that. And after a while, I was literally in tears, because I had spent so much time reading emails that were criticizing us, and, you know, and they, I'm glad people are emailing us and letting them know what they, letting us know what they think. But it was just so wonderful seeing how much support there is out there for the district, and how many people are really wanting to support our kids who need the most help. So I want to thank them. I think they did a great job with a virtual gala. I even got sort of dressed up just to make it more fun. So that's pretty much all I have, except a message from Laura.
Okay.
Tina, can I just add to that really quickly? Just a shout out. Just a shout out to John Taylor. He did an amazing job as an emcee in a virtual setting. I thought everybody, I should have said thanks to that, too. It was a really amazing event. And I was like Kitty with tears in my eyes through some of the performances and some of the accolades that were coming out. So thanks to Impact for all that they've done to support us. Thanks.
Okay, Lisa?
Thanks to our speakers tonight. I thought everybody was very passionate and thoughtful, and I think it gave me a lot of things to think about. I also wanted to thank Donna just now for your comments and to take the opportunity to reiterate what I've said at previous meetings, which is that I also have some pretty serious concerns about our pre-K through second students and what remote learning means for them. And then Rob, I was going to put you on the hot seat for a minute, if you don't mind. And I was saying before, I encountered some difficulties and some errors in looking to register my kids for childcare. And now that we've sort of had a minute to think about that, I wonder if it's something that's working now, if families who are watching should go and enroll their kids, or if we have a date by which it will be working and sorted out. But I know we're all eager to get on board, and I think as the board, we're all eager to know what numbers we have. So I want to make sure we're clear on whether childcare should be registered for now or if not when it should be.
If you give us a day or two to get that fixed online, I know Renee's working on this, and certainly we've heard that, but I want to just double check with her to see where we're at. By the end of the week, we'd hope to have that up and running.
So we don't want parents registering now. We prefer them to wait until Friday, take, and then to get online and make sure things look the way they should?
Well, if what you're saying is right, where the information is inaccurate, where they're registering, then yeah, we're going to need to fix that before we want people to register.
Okay, thank you. That'll do it for me.
Okay, Stacy?
I have nothing other than my thanks to the speakers for their time and to everyone who's emailed us with their comments and concerns. We're all overwhelmed. So thanks for taking the time.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just reiterate, I wanted to thank our speakers for coming and also recognize Sophie's diligence in looking at the Title IX policy. It's a really important policy and important practice that we need to make sure is clear and transparent in our community. I also just want to recognize, we do receive a lot of emails that are critical. We also receive emails that are very supportive and recognize the difficulties that our staff is facing. I think that it's really difficult because we don't have answers to all of people's questions and concerns right now as we sort of deal with some new challenges that came up in terms of staffing, in terms of the Colorado Department of Health guidelines. And so it's frustrating for everyone, and I know and I want to recognize that it's a really difficult situation for parents who are struggling to balance childcare and education, and it seems really difficult. But at the same time, we've also had community members standing up and asking to volunteer. They want to help make this work as a community, and they want us to stay together as a community. And to Kitty's point, the Together We Bloom fundraiser, which I wasn't able to attend, I was meeting my new nephew in Los Angeles, which was fantastic, was a great event and really shows how dedicated we continue to be to the Public Education Clause. And finally, and Donna, the idea that the September 22nd date is just sort of a date to keep people enrolled, and then we'll tell them the real truth, I hadn't really heard that through the emails. I don't believe that's necessarily the case. And my sense is that the district is working extraordinarily hard to get students back in school. And I feel from my conversations with Rob and from these board meetings that the intent is quite sincere, and they're doing everything they can to make it work, regardless of the conditions that we're in. So those are my comments, and that's it. So board members, do we need a break, or shall we keep going? Okay, we want to, yes, we want a break. Okay. So we will come back at, why don't we go with 8:05? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you for coming back and joining us for the second part of our meeting. We're going to start with our information items, and the first information item is excellence through equity. Rob?
Thank you, Tina. Board members, and for the public that's watching, there's been lots of talk over the past few months in regards to equity. What is our district doing in equity? How have we committed to equity? And we've been working, our communications team has been working along with staff to figure out what's the best way to share with our community all the incredible work that we're doing around equity. And so just a quick presentation and then a walkthrough of the website that we've set up, board members, to really highlight all of the work that's happening. Next slide, Randy. As we think about BVSD and our commitment to equity and excellence, we have really embraced this concept that to be truly excellent, that we're going to do that through equity. And so as we think about our strategic plan, which is in the next slide, All Together for All Students, I think is a reminder to the board and to the community that many, if not all, of the initiatives that we are taking on do have an equity component and were driven based on the desires and interests and beliefs and values of this community. And so as we think about All Together for All Students within our strategic plan, many of those initiatives are fully embedded with efforts in regards to raising equity. So at this time, I'll ask Randy Barber to pull up the website that we've developed and just, board members, do a quick walkthrough. I know we don't have tons of time this evening, but for those that are wanting to know what's happening, this gives anyone in our community an opportunity to really dial in on the equity efforts that are underway, and so they can know and understand that even amidst a pandemic, we're still committed to those efforts. And so I'll turn it over to Randy, who will walk us through the website, and we will just share some brief highlights. Randy?
Thanks, Rob. As the superintendent was mentioning, we have set up a website, and our hope was to sort of capture the slice of all the things that we're doing, all this amazing work that's happening in equity. And so as you can see, we have that new logo that's in there. We're actually featuring some video that we've recently captured. In fact, down here, a little bit lower on the page, there's the entire presentation that is actually going to be presented to our staff as part of this work moving forward. And so you can actually look through here. We've got the entire slide, all the different parts that are the videos that include our wonderful Equity and Family Partnership Director, Ari Gerson Kessler, kind of working through that. And we kind of go through a whole bunch of things, including how to overcome bias and that kind of idea. Additionally, as you know, we oftentimes have some issue when we talk to folks about equity where they sort of give you that blank look in the face about, you know, what do we mean by that? And so over time, through the equity work that we've done, those groups that we've held at the district, they've defined what that is, and so we've got that for folks to be able to see. Obviously, quick links off to the website, some articles and resources that will continue to grow as Ari and his team use this. I think the most interesting part of this is really sort of an encapsulation of all these projects that we've got. And we'll be working on kind of how to tag this and make this even a little bit easier to use. But right now, as you can see, it's quite a wide list of things that we've got. And so what you can do from there is then, you know, dive in at any point and learn a little bit more about, you know, how did that particular program come about? As you can see here, it kind of goes through, why is this important? A little description of it, and then sort of the timeline. And so we have that for each and every one of our projects as we're looking at it. And then people can start it by students, parents, staff, so that you kind of know what the intent of that project is. And so hopefully, we'll give people a little taste of what's going on there. Other things that we'll be trying to do here in the near future is really connect things like stories that have been done about the work that's happening there, that kind of thing. So I'll turn it back over to the superintendent. Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Randy. And Randy, what is the website? What is the direct link to that site?
It's just bvsd.org/equity. And it's also on the homepage, just below our news stories.
Very good. So just a landing spot, just a real quick, just five-minute presentation, board members. And so as you peruse that, and as our community begins to start to really dial in on all the things that we're doing, what we were finding is we were presenting those to you a few at a time. And this gives us really one place to really capture a lot of the equity work that we're doing. And we felt like it was an appropriate time to present that, given the topic tonight, which we'll talk about next in regards to developing equity councils and then starting our conversation on school resource officers in Boulder Valley schools. So I'll pause there and answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Rob. And I appreciate the valuing the need to communicate our work to our stakeholders and our community, as well as obviously doing the work. So it's really important. So Richard, any questions?
No, I just, on the website, Rob, and it really looks good. So I'm working two computers here, and this one here, yeah. You talk about all the programs you have, and I like it.
Thanks, Richard. Just kudos to our team. You know, we have an equity-focused team, especially those folks not just working in our schools, but working at the district administration. So we're...
I didn't even interrupt. This is really great, because I've had a few individuals in the community ask me about even our disparities in discipline and stuff like that. And I think this is a good place to point them into, you know, to have them check out. I don't know if you got that information, you got the discipline policies, but...
And I will say, kind of to your point as you're talking here, that, you know, this is kind of a beginning spot. You know, talking to Ari, you know, things that we've identified aren't on here right now. For instance, our parity, you know, certainly groups in our community also that need to be added here. And so they're pulling some more resources that will be included here as well.
I like it, but, you know, just a suggestion in terms of, I think, you know, when we talk about our discipline policies, and I think we really need to, because I don't see, I don't know whether we need to advertise this or not, but I think it'd be good to make sure that people understand that a lot of the stuff really occurred because we were taken seriously, the whole disparities in discipline and the disparities that we're going to be talking about here pretty soon anyway as it relates to opportunities that kids may not have, especially the kids of color that may not have in the schools. Yeah, but it's a good beginning. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Okay, Kathy?
I just share Richard's enthusiasm. Thanks for doing this. I think putting it all in one spot is really awesome. And so thanks for bringing this out to the public and to all of us. And I look forward to seeing us continue to grow our work on equity and continue to serve all of our students. So thanks for doing it.
Okay, Donna?
No questions. Thank you. Looks good.
Okay, Kitty?
Same as Donna, and I share Richard's enthusiasm. It looks great. Thanks.
Okay, Lisa?
At the risk of being a broken record, it looks great. Thanks so much.
And Stacy?
No questions. Nice work. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is, as Rob just said, the Boulder Valley School District's Equity Council.
Thank you, Tina. We are lucky enough to have Landon Mascherinas and the team from CEI here to present. But I wanted to just start with a brief introduction on how did we end up with the proposal that you'll be hearing as we move forward? And really, this really started with the conversation around discipline policies and SROs. And how do we make sure as a school district that we're always looking at these things and have the right people in the room to help advise us and coach us to really make sure that we're dialed in on not only our version of equity, but the version of equity that is representative of the community we have the honor to serve? And so as we started to dig into, you know, how are we going to set up a four-month process around SROs, we met with some folks, really enjoyed meeting with CEI, who's got some experience, and their approach, we just thought was really a great fit for not only our community, but for what we want to do. And I think it's an approach that can last beyond just a conversation on whether or not you should have school resource officers, but discipline policies, opportunity gaps, any of the equity challenges that we're going to have to wrestle with. It would be, the setting up of equity councils, I'm convinced, is going to be a great way to do, to get the right levels of engagement and information to make really good, smart decisions. And so I didn't know, Mike Grotos, who has been working closely with CEI, if you wanted to share anything else. And then we'll turn it over to Landon and the team at CEI.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Anderson and Tina, or members of the board. I just am very excited to have this group work with this, as to, Dr. Anderson was saying, through the equity lens. And I think what you're going to hear is topics that will come up within our strategic plan, things that you saw on the website, will definitely lend itself to an equity council to make sure that they're overseeing what is being done, and it's done with accountability and done with goodwill. So CEI, the Colorado Education Initiative, which most of you may know a little bit about, is a nonprofit organization that supports public education, and they center their focus around equity. And so we thought it would be a good time to actually bring them in and talk about what they could do, in particular to our conversations around SROs and other things that we may find as something that will challenge, and we need some deep thinkers and some facilitators to help us go through that. So Landon Mascherinas is from the Colorado Education Initiative. He is the Vice President of Community Partnerships. I'm going to hand it over to him, and then he's going to introduce his team. And one in particular of his team is actually a BVSD graduate. So I'm very proud to see that we have someone come back that gets back to the community and was also one of my former students. So I'm very proud of that as well. So Landon, I'll let you take it.
Thanks, Mike, and thanks, Dr. Anderson. And I just want to, first off, just say thank you to the entire Boulder Valley School Board. You know, I've been on the board meeting all night and just been hearing about the incredible work that you're taking on. And just want to say thank you for your questions and comments and holding our families and communities at the center and pushing hard for the kind of conversations that's going to allow them to have access and equity in this moment of incredible trial and challenge. And also to thank the staff of Boulder Valley Schools. I mean, I can't imagine a more challenging time to be an educator committed to equity and access. But I just think, very grateful that we have colleagues like this in Colorado who are committed every day to making this possible. So my name is Dr. Landon Mascherinas. I work for the Colorado Education Initiative. I'm the Vice President for Community Partnership. And I just want to say this is a really personally special thing for me to be here with you all today. In 1922, my great-grandparents came over from Mexico to Boulder and lived in a boxcar in Boulder through the winter and had my grandmother. And my grandmother was born in Boulder, as was my dad, and my grandmother attended Boulder schools. And my grandmother spoke Spanish, because that's what she spoke at home with her family, and was held back in first grade in Boulder schools because she spoke English. And because of that shame and because of the way she was taunted and shamed by her classmates, she actually never taught her own kids, including my father, Spanish. And I fight every day to make sure that every kid in Colorado has the opportunity to live their fullest self in the schools of our state. And that's what we're here to talk about today in terms of the Equity Council. And I'm really excited. Can't wait for you to meet our team. We're excited to work with you on this exciting initiative, which we've had a chance to work on kind of actually regionally and now locally. And it's an incredible opportunity that we're excited to work in partnership with your community. So I'm going to start to share my screen and jump in. Can you guys see the screen? Great. I love lots of thumbs up. That's wonderful. So we'll just do a little introductions and welcome, you know, Dr. Anderson talked about the big questions of equity in your community. Right now, that's this question among many around school resource officers. But really, we want to talk about why equity councils are a powerful solution for that because they represent an opportunity to engage equity issues in the long term through bringing your community forward in a dynamic solution. And then we'll talk about some next steps. First off, a little bit about the Colorado Education Initiative. We were formed about 12 years ago to be an innovation and support partner with Colorado school districts all over the entire state. And as we've helped districts and schools redesign around the state, we believe that there are six design commitments that highly effective redesigns take on. And in any initiative, there's an opportunity to bring many of these into play. And the Equity Council is an incredible opportunity. And the Equity Council is an incredible opportunity to infuse uh youth activation, family-community partnership, change management, and of course, diversity, equity, inclusion, and the idea of an ongoing body that will advise the superintendent on the board of the most pressing equity issues facing the district. And uh we believe that these uh exciting redesigns of our public education system create the opportunity for a deeper dialogue and a more robust conversation about the issues uh pressing uh our your community in Boulder and around our country right now. I've already introduced myself, uh, and I'd love for uh my colleagues, starting with maybe Marcus, uh, to introduce themselves. Uh, and you can learn a little bit more about who we are, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the Equity Councils.
Um, yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce myself. Thank you, Landon. Um, before I start, I just want to thank the board um for taking the time with us this evening. Uh, and I also want to say, like Lynn, and I've I've been here since six o'clock. So I've been listening to the other conversations, sort of the other battles that your district is fighting. And um it's been really encouraging and inspiring to see the way that you approach those conversations. Um, it you are modeling your values as a district, and so that's that's great to see. And it's nice to be a part of. We're excited to be working with you. Um, I am Marcus Bratton. I'm from the Colorado Education Initiative. I'm the Director of Implementation and Partnership uh for the districts uh that we work with. Um, I've been with CEI about a month. Uh, but before that, I was a building administrator at a K eight in Northeast Denver for six years. And uh prior to that, I taught high school at a credit recovery high school in Aurora. Um, and so this equity work and education work in the Denver metro area, um, serving the students furthest from opportunity is is really my passion. Um, I'm able to do that at CEI uh in a scope that I wasn't able to as a building-based administrator. Um, and so I'm thankful for that opportunity, and we're thankful to be um working with you guys on this project. And I'm going to pass it over to Jaren, who is a uh BVSD grad alumni.
That's right. Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you um about this work. I am the Boulder grad. Uh, my entire K twelve experience was in Boulder Valley Schools, starting with Woodyer Elementary, moving on to Casey Middle School in its first year of middle schoolness. Prior to that, it was a junior high school. So now you know how old I am. Um, and that was where uh Mike Grotos was my principal. Um, and then, of course, I went on to Boulder High School where I graduated. Um, so it's a real honor to um come back to the community. Um, I am super excited to engage with you um on this work. I'm a Program Lead of Data and Learning. Um, and uh just really thankful for this time. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to my colleague, Valeria.
Hi, everyone. My name is Valeria Martinez. I am the Program Associate at CEI. Super excited to engage with the Boulder um Valley School District community. Uh, before my time at CEI, I worked very closely with um families and students to advocate for uh more equitable transportation options, uh better food options, and then um just general facility conditions. So I'm just really excited to learn from the Boulder Valley School District community, engage their voices in an Equity Council, and um work towards more towards more equitable outcomes.
Great. Thank you all. Um, it's a great team. Uh, we're uh really excited to support uh Boulder Valley. And we want to talk a little bit about uh why Equity Councils, and then we'll talk about kind of our next steps from there. And would love to answer any of your questions. Um, there are a lot of ways uh to build uh equity-seeking capacity in school systems. Uh, so why Equity Councils? Um, there's so many training, there's so many initiatives, but fundamentally, what we're talking about is that uh Equity Councils sit at the intersection of governance and partnership. Um, and then if you're going to really address the root cause issues, families and communities and students need a seat at the table to debate, understand, and discuss, and propose solutions around the equity issues that they themselves face. Um, and Equity Councils create the potential for shared understanding. Um, one of the biggest challenges in equity work that I've worked on around Colorado and around the country is that oftentimes people have very different understandings and perspectives around what's happening uh around particular equity issues. Um, so Equity Councils create an opportunity for level-setting the community and community partners around a particular set of issues. In this case, the first one to be taking on is around school resource officers. What are the facts? What do we know to be true? What are the issues? What's in the background that's happened already that we need to move into the foreground so the community can actually grieve or process through a particular challenge and get on to the idea of proposing a solution that works for more people? And then what's really important in the long term is that Equity Councils can offer uh new opportunities to explore what's possible. And one of the things I was really inspired by over the course of our conversation, your conversation tonight, was the idea of uh task forces or opportunities to gather feedback from the community. And when I've worked with school districts um who are setting up Equity Councils, that can be a place where our groups can, instead of having to start a new group every time, people can go to this group and say, hey, we have this particular challenge, solution, and we'd love your perspective on dealing with it. Um, and it creates a shared muscle and capacity, not only within the internal district system, but in the external community system, so that people can have an open dialogue about what's possible instead of a closed system that actually uh people struggle to find out where to give their feedback to. Um, what's our experience in doing this work? Um, I've been working in uh equity-related equity-related education endeavors for a long time now. But in very much in particular, over the last six months, uh, we at CEI and myself in particular, I've been working with the entire state of New Mexico to stand up Equity Councils in every single district and every single charter school in the state of New Mexico. And right now, we have over ninety percent of the state's school districts and charter schools in compliance with uh setting up Equity Councils, having members, and launching their first set of meetings. Um, and it was an incredible process to work with an uh a a really exciting group of community members and leaders on the issues of identity, equity, and transformation, mapping who's in their community, building out the membership of what's possible, and thinking about how the Equity Council idea can actually address the most particular root cause issue in that community. Um, we started a lot of this work before COVID hit. In fact, actually, our convening in Albuquerque was a couple of weeks before uh right before COVID launched. The COVID took over all of our consciousness and all of our schools and all of our minds and all of our lives. Um, and um through the experience of COVID and even the racial justice movement uh facing this country, schools were able to leverage the Equity Councils as a major opportunity to drive new innovation, community dialogue, and initiatives to bring a new spirit and ethic to their community around uh important equity issues. Is it challenging? Sure. Bringing new people together for large conversations about uh challenging issues, of course, is. Uh, but it's worth it because on the other side, you can build real community understanding, real community buy-in, and an opportunity to bring uh lots of different people together uh in the process. Um, over the course of the next few months, we're going to be working with the incredible team at BVSD uh with point person being Mike uh to move through three phases. One is really to uh build out the membership of the Equity Council, which I'm happy to talk more about the conversations we've initially had and get your thoughts on that. Uh, conduct outreach to strategic partners, assemble a data set for the Equity Council work. We want to know what that data and line of analysis is to make it possible. We want to host, begin hosting bi-weekly Equity Council meetings in September, set the culture and norms for how they interact with each other, and begin to assemble potential recommendations, understanding about the SRO issue here in BVSD. And then uh moving into phase three, propose initial recommendations, uh adjust those recommendations, and then finalize them uh for the superintendent in your consideration. So obviously, an ambitious uh stretch of work uh over the next uh few months, uh but one that uh we really believe is very possible and needed, and also gives the opportunity to build a new muscle within BVSD to take on equity-related work um and really build out what's possible for taking on uh these this challenging issue. So with that, I'll pause. Um, what questions or comments do you have?
Okay, um, or numbers. Do we start with Richard?
Thank you, Tina. Hi, Landon. How you doing?
Richard, how you doing, man?
Doing well. Just uh to let everybody know that Landon and I also serve on the State Advisory Board for uh the Community College System, so uh full disclosure here.
That's right.
Uh, the uh, the uh question that I have is probably more for Dr. Anderson. Uh, the Equity Council, are we talking about one council or a few councils or or? Because in New Mexico, you did Equity Councils in every school district. So I don't know. I don't think that you had four or five Equity Councils in one school district, did you?
No, it was a it was one is a district-wide initiative.
Okay, so so uh, Dr. Anderson, this Equity Council, at least the way you that you're looking at it from your from your eyes. Uh, because I I've done a lot of work, not with Equity Councils, but in building um groups and communities and all of that through the statewide parent coalition. I did that pretty much for about forty years. Uh, and one of the biggest uh obstacles that we had to uh overcome when we were trying to build groups in the schools is the lack of leadership uh and the lack of leadership support for the groups. And also the lack of having any real authority as it related to any kind of group that you're putting together. What what are these Equity Councils? Uh, how are they going to look like? And and uh are they going to have teeth to whatever they do? Or is it just another advisor group?
Thanks, Richard. Uh, I think I think those are are great questions. Number one, I mean, I'm I'm seeing this as one district-wide Equity Council, so not a multitude of councils, just one council. Um, and I would say that um in regards to authority, um, this council i- is going to be empowered to tackle really tough, challenging issues around equity, issues that we've struggled with. And this is board, as we've we've discussed openly. Um, we, you know, we we want to change. We don't like some of our outcomes. And for whatever reason, even with the best intentions and great people working on it on equity, um, a lot of our outcomes haven't changed in a long time. So I would say that that they're going to be given certainly an appropriate authority, space to really tackle things and push the district. I mean, it is is almost a an accountability partner. And, you know, again, you know, based on our last presentation, um, you know, equity is is, you know, excellence through equity is is really what we're embracing. So um I don't think that that, Richard, some of the challenges that you have faced, where you are, you know, finding an uphill battle um to establish the groups and then also get people to listen to the groups, that won't be an issue with me. Um, that I'm going to take this very seriously. Um, I have a lot of faith in Landon and his team that they're going to help us set this up very, very well. I mean, it'll give us the variety of perspectives that I think that we need um to provide us the focus to make the changes and improvements that we need to be more equitable as a school system.
You thank you, Rob, and I know that you and I had a conversation on the Equity Councils, at least on the membership of the Equity Councils. And I don't know whether you've had any more thoughts in terms of the uh membership or how that how that's going to work. Uh, the uh, the uh equity issue, at least in my mind, uh, has a lot to do with with your uh populations that don't have a voice uh and uh aren't able to uh uh provide that voice uh through any other means. And I'm hoping that through these Equity Councils that we will have the membership that will give a lot of uh uh people without a voice, membership in these Equity Councils. Uh, what's that membership going to look like?
Landon, if you want to maybe talk talk the board through kind of how we were thinking about that?
We are uh proposing a three-part structure with a a three-legged stool for the membership of the Equity Council. And this is based on a lot of my experience. And I just want to take a second to, uh, again, I appreciate uh my board. My other board member, uh, colleague, uh, Richard, and his questions, the question of accountability is a real one. And I would say that, you know, I got a chance to work with your former colleague, uh, Patsy Royball, Richard at DPS. And she taught me a lot about how to think about the accountability structures. Um, and I just want to say that, you know, we really think the membership has to include the diverse uh array of population in Boulder Valley. So we think there's three components. Uh, one is folks that uh you all believe have to be at the table. These are either advocacy groups, uh, community leaders, stakeholders, that um that for a variety of reasons, uh, for a variety of needs, got to be there. Um, this could be local community college, or it could be a higher education institution, could be a business leader. Um, but this is more directed by you. The second group we're proposing is membership-based, that will have an open application process that will um create the opportunity for Boulder Valley uh uh community members and and families to uh select themselves into the process, to apply to be in the process. And then the third leg of the stool that I really believe is essential in this time and place to get to what you're asking, uh, Board Member Garcia, is the idea of a random selection of parents and families, similar to a jury selection, where we're asking people furthest from opportunity from a variety of different backgrounds. And, you know, we're going to work with BVSD to design that and would welcome any suggestions on it. But the idea would be that we would uh invite folks in um proactively to be a part of it. So different from the membership of the folks that you know are going to apply and different from the folks that you know have to be there, we want to get a new group of folks that represent our students and families uh furthest from opportunity at the table uh by doing direct outreach uh through selection.
Thank you, Landon. Uh, so the uh what 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 is the linguistic ability of your group? Are you all bilingual?
I'm bilingual.
I wish I I wish I could say I was bilingual, uh, Richard. Uh, but unfortunately, uh, my Spanish is uh, I can understand, um, speak a little. Uh, but Valeria is fully fluent and bilingual, and she'll be able to lead a lot of our conversations with our Spanish-speaking community.
I, yeah, I was on mute when Valeria spoke, and I recognized her voice. Uh, so Valeria, you're bilingual. You're the only staff member that's bilingual?
Correct.
Thank you. I, so who is really going to take the lead on the councils? From your end?
From the CEI end?
Yeah.
Uh, all four of us will be very involved in this process. Um, we've all been meeting with uh Mike regularly, and we're going to be assembling a core team of folks together with Mike uh of Boulder Valley uh team members uh to partner with us. And we believe that uh different folks, parts of our team, will take different leads on different components of the components of it.
So Valeria might be leading the Spanish component.
Yes, and I, in my experience, I also facilitated family discussions, um advocacy meetings in both English and Spanish with families and scholars.
Uh, Rob, this is for you. If 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 uh the other components that are not being led in Spanish, but you have Spanish speakers there, we will have translation opportun uh services, right?
Yeah, we'll take care of that, Richard. I don't, we couldn't do this work without doing that. So, yeah, so so we'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Donna? Donna, do you have any questions?
Can you hear me? No, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Mike. And it looks like there's been a lot of work put into it, and I'm looking forward to the rest of uh what's to come. Thank you.
Kitty?
Uh, no questions, just thanks for doing the work, and I'm really looking forward to seeing um how this turns out.
Lisa?
Hi, yeah, first, Richard, thank you so much for all of your questions. As always, they were appreciated. Um, two questions. What what work do we imagine this council doing post uh the SRO conversation? Are they going to be sticking around and continuing to engage with us? And what topics do we have envisioned for what that engagement looks like?
Well, I think that, you know, we we can, obviously, discipline is 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 very much related to the SRO conversation. I think that makes sense. I think once we have the council together, I think that that would be a great question to ask them as we think about the outcomes that we have, that we're trying to um improve, that haven't moved. I think this gives us a great place um as a governance team to really engage this group on any issues that we're trying to tackle together.
And then I'm wondering, will this work the same way our other councils do? Where board members can um join meetings and see what's going on? I think several of us would be interested to see what happens with these councils.
Yeah, I'm I'll defer to to CEI and Landon's expertise on how they want to structure this. I I mean, I would imagine that the structure is a bit different than maybe our other um advisory councils because it seems like um there's just going to be some more structure. So Landon, do you want to provide any comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I I I guess I would say that, uh, ooh, there's some intense feedback coming in here, huh? Uh, apologies. Um, I would say that the uh, it's totally up to you guys to think through what that uh, what that looks like. I've worked with school districts that have uh Equity Councils where board members are regularly engaged in the process. And that's a really important leverage point for lifting their voice up in the accountability process that uh that Board Member Garcia talked about earlier. Um, I've also seen. Um, I've also seen places where board members step back and say, you know what? We want this group to be totally independent and create its own space and structure and culture. And we'll just check in regularly when they actually come present to us. Um, and I think that that's an opportunity for engagement and dialogue with uh, how you all want to set it up. Both are totally advisable.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have more questions. I'm excited to see where this goes and to uh, yeah, see the next steps.
Okay, Stacy?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks. It's really nice to meet all of you, and thank you for coming to Boulder Valley to do this work. Um, and I, I, I think it's, it's interesting that we found a way to continue this work when our staff are just overloaded with the logistical problems in front of us, and it's the right thing to, to go outside of our district to bring in extra capacity so we can continue to focus on this equity work that we're all pretty committed to on this board. Um, and just to follow up to Lisa's question about sort of the board involvement, and I'm pretty neutral on that topic. Um, it might make sense just to check in with the members of the parity group, because they have a structure that's independent. Except for twice a year, they invite board members in for feedback and just understand from that group what that feels like, if it's the right level of engagement, whether they want more. Um, that might be a good resource for us. So uh, with that, I, I don't have any other questions. And um, but just thanks again for coming and joining us and for joining such a long meeting.
Yeah, I, I just have one quick, quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
And that has to do with the equal opportunity schools. Uh, if the equity councils continue, because it's all about equity, it's not necessarily just SRO, it's equity. Uh, and the equal opportunity schools, I know that we've already uh, approved a, a contract with them as it relates to looking at opportunities that relate to APA classes and all of that wonderful stuff. Is there going to be any, if in fact they continue, I would like to see some, some uh, uh, interlink uh, or work between both of them, because it seemed like they're doing both. Both types of uh, things anyway, as it relates to equity.
I, I think that, you know, as we think about um, opportunity gaps and advan, and access to advanced coursework, you know, as we have, have, have brought forward strategic plan metrics, that's been a priority for this board. So I could see that being a potential um, other area that this equity council could get, certainly get involved in. But um, you know, looking forward to getting this set up first and, and having them tackle um, wh- what's a pretty big uh, big topic in regards to SROs and schools with a pretty short timeline that, you know, which wanted, wanted to honor um, the timeliness of that. So they've got work to do. But you know, once we've moved through that, you know, I think that we can just, I think there's three or four topics that make a ton of sense, and it may even be something that we could add, Tina, uh, depending upon how the board feels on this and in regards to our prioritization meetings on what are some things, what's some things that we might want the equity council to tackle? So we get all board members um, thoughts on that. Uh, it could be a, a way that we can move forward.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks again, and uh,
Thank you all.
We will move on to our next item, which again is related, the presentation of the role of school resource officers in Boulder. And BBSD, sorry.
Yes, and um, Rob, I'm going to turn it over to you. Um, Rob and team have, have a presentation from, for you all. So Rob Price, uh, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, before I pull up the presentation, I just want to do some quick introductions. So joining me tonight is our Director of Safety and Security, Brendan Sullivan. Uh, Brendan will be presenting on the role of campus safety officer. So tonight's presentation is titled, "The Role of School Resource Officers." I wanted to take this opportunity and talk about the different layers that we have within BBSD. Also presenting tonight is uh, Jonathan Dings. Don, Jonathan is our Executive Director of Program Evaluation. He's going to talk about some of the relevant data around school resource officers. And then also joining us tonight is Ruben Rojas. Ruben is a school resource officer at Centaurus High School. And he'll be talking early about the particulars of what a school resource officer does on a daily basis and why he does it. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. Are you able to see that? And get a thumbs up? Are you able to see the screen? Yep?
Yes.
Yes, we are, Rob.
Thank you. So as I talked about, just as the presentation's laid out, um, we're going to start talking about school resource officer responsibility. Um, district employees, as we refer to them, as campus safety officers' responsibility. Brendan's going to talk about the differences between the two. Uh, Jonathan will talk about law enforcement actions uh, by SROs and the relevant data around that. And then we'll talk about next steps and then take questions following that. So with that, I will turn it over to Brendan.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, board. Um, I want to start out with this graphic, which is illustrative, that BBSD subscribes to the principles of a layered security approach. And what that means is that we use several programs and systems, training and personnel to provide a safe and secure environment for our staff and for our students. Uh, some of these layers include our student services and support personnel and programming, our counselors, threat assessment teams, all of our emergency preparedness efforts, the bond work, um, district security personnel and SROs. Next slide, please. Uh, like Rob Price had said, we've invited Ruben Rojas uh, to come speak tonight. He is a uh, Centaurus High School uh, SRO. He's employed by the Lafayette Police Department. We have um, ten SROs within BBSD's footprint. Each one of those SROs is employed by their respective agencies, and they um, provide services to the schools that are within their geographic boundaries of their city or unincorporated county. Um, at this point, I will turn it over to uh, Ruben Rojas.
Hello. My name is Ruben Rojas, and I'm a school resource officer here in the Boulder Valley School District. After serving for over sixteen years as a police officer, I had the opportunity to be involved in many different aspects of law enforcement. However, my most fulfilling assignment has been that of a school resource officer. I'm a police officer in the city of Lafayette, currently assigned as the SRO, teach of the seven schools in the city. My main focus is to ensure a safe learning environment for both students and staff in each one of those locations. I'm part of the security team that helps control access into and out of the buildings at the start and end of each school day. While students are inside the school and walk the campus to ensure students are safe while inside their classrooms. An important aspect of my job is the ability to be mobile. This allows me to visit with students, teachers and administrators as I make my way throughout the schools to which I'm assigned. It's during these visits where I learn about the concerns of students and staff. During these trips, I make sure to meet and greet students and provide encouragement as they go about their school day. When I'm in my office, I have an open door policy. This means that I'm available to engage in informal counseling sessions with students and their parents. I'm also able to provide needed referrals to in-school resources, such as counselors, interventionists, the health office of social workers. Sometimes those referrals are for community-based services such as legal aid, public health agencies and community food banks. Many of these meetings happen when students stop by to visit with me. I really enjoy keeping up with each of their academic and extracurricular activities. This allows me the opportunity to build a trusting relationship by always being ready to provide an attentive audience for whatever's on the student's mind. Next slide, please. Mentorship is one aspect of the SRO job, which allows me to be a guiding influence in the lives of my students. I serve a diverse student population, and I'm strongly invested in building relationships and learning about the different needs of these student groups. As an example, I've been asked to assist with incidents involving special education students. Since I'm familiar with each of the students and their particular learning styles, I'm able to avoid certain trigger words and actions in order to de-escalate any potential problems. I'm also part of the school community and meet regularly with teachers and support staff in order to learn more about how ongoing issues may be motivating a student's disruptive behavior. In this way, we can collaborate to ensure an effective and supportive response, which will lead the student to more constructive alternatives. This also allows me to build a unique rapport with that student that carries over into the community when we see each other outside of the school environment. The relationship that I have with my students is built over time. This has created opportunities where I've been able to successfully mediate ongoing disputes between students and their parents. It's not unusual to find a voicemail message on my office phone from a parent asking if I wouldn't mind reaching out to their child during the school day. This allows me to address the issues and talk about building better communication skills and setting goals in order to reach an agreeable compromise at home. Next slide, please. As an SRO, I'm an educational resource for students, teachers and administrators. This involves bringing my experiences as a law enforcement officer into the school setting in order to promote effective educational opportunities for each of my students. This involves teaching older students the dangers of distracted driving in the classroom with the use of a driving simulator. This is especially helpful during the busy homecoming and prom season for high school students. I also address questions regarding traffic safety and what to expect during a traffic stop. For younger students, I've had the opportunity to set up and participate in bicycle rodeos with the help of our community partners and the police department. Students are provided practical bicycle safety training. This includes stations where students can have their bicycle equipment, check for safety, and ride through a simulated bicycle obstacle course. For our parents, I've been able to provide educational opportunities around important topics such as vaping and marijuana use. This involves coordinating with school interventionists in providing educational materials as well as labs that show examples of confiscated drug paraphernalia and how they are normally concealed. I'm involved in the planning and implementing of procedures to train and drill, to train and drill all campus personnel to respond to crisis events. This includes onsite visits as schools participate in the regular emergency drills. I meet regularly with administrators in order to exchange information about concerns brought forward from students, staff and parents regarding potential threats, drug activity, and other disruptive behaviors that can create a potential safety hazard to any one of our schools. Next slide, please. Large part of my responsibility, working with students, involves early intervention. My goal is to meet with students before decisions are made that will create the need for a formal law enforcement action. This involves building on the relationships previously established as SRO based on trust with students, experience with the juvenile justice system, and an understanding of conflict resolution techniques. This can go a long way in preventing problems that could have escalated to nine-one-one calls from the school. An effective SRO brings a level of expert's peace to the school setting that promotes effective problem solving and the prevention of crimes before they ever have an opportunity to occur at one of our schools. There are instances where rumors of potential threats to school are being shared through social media or are being brought directly to my attention by students. I coordinate with administrators in order to interview staff and students that may have direct knowledge of the persons involved. This allows for a collaborative approach in identifying and redirecting those students towards available support services within the school and the surrounding community. Mental health issues are a frequent area of struggle for some of our students in our schools. I'm available to meet with students as they bring their concerns about potential suicidal thoughts and bringing mental health counselors to help process these feelings. I'm often the person who provides transportation when it's deemed necessary to mental health screening at a hospital. I also coordinate with parents and emergency room staff to ensure that the needs of my students are being met. I've met with students who have brought their concerns about a fellow classmate who may have been the victim of a sexual assault. I can bring in my experience as an investigator and informal counselor to meet with the victims of crimes that may not have been reported otherwise. I will coordinate with counseling staff, administrators and parents to ensure that the student has access to the appropriate criminal justice avenues and mental health resources. As part of their daily interaction with students, many times teachers and staff are made aware of a potential potential abuse or neglect involving one of our students. At those times, I'm a resource in helping to ensure that the educator's duty to report is fulfilled as required by state mandatory reporting laws. My goal in serving as an SRO is to provide services to schools that would not be available otherwise from an individual patrol officer. Being assigned to a school allows me the opportunity to visit and build a relationship with students and staff on a regular basis. This may involve speaking in the classroom, participating in a game of basketball, sitting down for lunch, or providing words of encouragement to a student before a big event in their academic or personal life. I have the responsibility to ensure that students, teachers, staff and administrators can feel safe and supported as they go about their school day. I also have the responsibility to each and every parent in providing them with the confidence that there's a police officer at their student's school that is prepared to sacrifice themselves completely to ensure the safety of their children. I'd like to close by thanking the board and the public that's listening at, at this moment in time for giving me the time to speak about the role of an SRO uh, i- in our school district. Now, I would just like to close with uh, this observation. Um, these past couple of months have been very difficult for each and every one of us in the school district. And in my role as a patrol officer, I get to see the, the after effect, the negative impact on our communities as a result of all of the turmoil that's going on. And it especially hurts me when I, when I see that it's one of my kids involved that I know from school. Uh, and I'm always left wondering about the kids that have uh, for lack of a better phrase, have fallen off the radar, that they, they've lost their daily interaction with the support services that would have been available through the school, be it through a counselor, an interventionist, a favorite teacher. But one of the things that uh, really builds my trust and, and warms my heart, an offer that I have always made to each and every one of my students, no matter what school district I've worked at, is that I'm always reachable on my cell phone. I always make sure that I give out my cell phone to parents, teachers and students. I'd just like to let you know that in the time that we've been having the school board meeting, I've had three families reach out to me via text. So I have two appointments set up for tomorrow morning, and there was another matter that was a little bit more pressing. I, I got ahold of one of our evening shift officers and, and made sure that that family was attended to. I want the board and the public to know that we as school resource officers are eager to get back into the schools. But I also wanted each and every one of you to know that even though we may not be in the school, we're out there still making sure that our kids are being taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Uh, next slide, please. Um. So this is uh, our current allocation of S, or um, campus uh, safety personnel that are in BBSD. Our campus safety personnel are uh, hired uh, Unit C employees. We have just over seventeen and a half FTEs, and they're assigned um, to the schools in the table below. Next slide, please. So these two uh, tables represent, and it's not an exhaustive list, but they represent um, some of the duties of uh, campus safety personnel versus a uh, school resource officer. And I think as you look through that, you'll notice the big difference between the two is that our campus safety personnel, they provide site security and student supervision. Whereas our SROs, they have advanced training, they have the background and the legal authority to investigate crimes and enforce state and local laws. They have the tools and training, they have the resources and experience necessary to manage and resolve critical incidents that may occur at our schools where our campus safety personnel does not. Uh, they are post-certified through the criminal justice section of the Colorado Attorney General's Office um, to perform their duties. Uh, our uh, school resource officers have um, provided background and intelligence on issues that have directly impacted the safety of our schools. Uh, these criminal justice, uh, these are criminal justice records that we don't control or have direct access to. And in the past, this has given our schools and our threat assessment teams a clear picture of the entire set of circumstances so that we're able to complete uh, the appropriate assessment to provide uh, supports for the students and to make our schools safer. I'm going to now turn it over to Jonathan Dings.
President Mark, with members of the board, Dr. Anderson. Um, I'm, I'm- I'm here to review a bit of data, which we have courtesy of our law enforcement agencies who did a little extra work to make sure that we had something to work with to focus the data a little bit more. So what we have here is data focusing over the last three years. And we've chosen to break it down by arrests and then by tickets, which are the formal records that we have of formal actions taken by school resource officers. What we see, and we'll go into some more detail on these, is that we've had forty-five arrests over the past three years. About one-third of those have been to Latino students and two of them to Black students. When we look at tickets, we also see that the receipt of a ticket is also disproportionately high for Latino and Black students. Next slide, please. When we look at what the arrests are for, we see, and this is again drawing data from multiple agencies, which we're super happy to have. There were some choices I had to make in terms of how to categorize these. We chose the first offense listed. Sometimes an arrest is for multiple things. But we see that there were sex offenses and controlled substance related as the top causes for an arrest. Assault, interference with a school or its staff were the next two, followed by arson, marijuana or tobacco-related offenses, and then serving a warrant on a student at school. And then we see the other reasons for arrests also. On the next slide, what we see are tickets shown in proportion to the district population. And again, this breaks us down a bit further, but would show that we have proportionately more arrests for Latino students and Black students than we do to their population proportion in the district. On the next slide, we see the reasons for summonses, right? So these are the written reasons associated with why a summons or an arrest, sorry, in this case, was issued over the last three years. We see the largest reasons, the most frequent ones are around marijuana, followed by alcohol, disorderly conduct, drug-related, and then assault, trespassing, and harassment, followed by theft and damage to private property. There are other reasons not listed based on the small numbers. So we dug into this a little bit more and asked the question, in terms of the actions that we're seeing, right, that resulted in an arrest or a ticket, where was the beginning of that coming from in the record that the agency had for the agencies who have this level of data and shared it with us? And what we found is that most of the calls are from staff, seventy-two percent. And that the calls, and these are of the calls that resulted in an arrest or a ticket, those calls by our own staff are disproportionately high in the same kind of pattern that we're seeing overall, right? They're high for Latino students, they're high for Black students. In the balance of the other calls, right, which are noted by the groups noted here in the official police record that we got, we would see that those were about like what we saw in terms of staff, disproportionately high again for Latino and Black students. And these are again based on events that we had an arrest or summons record for in jurisdictions that had sufficiently detailed data over the last three years for us to compile this information. So finally, next slide. Looking forward, we see that there is a next step here to share data locally to better understand patterns. While there was a great deal of similarity across jurisdictions, things weren't exactly equal in all instances. And there can be some additional analysis of this data, but in some cases requiring the gathering of other data, right? The records that we have are of encounters that lead to a ticket or that lead to an arrest. I mean, in the period of time we're talking about, an arrest would happen about, you know, once or twice a month across all of Boulder Valley. So we don't really have data on all the kinds of encounters with a school resource officer that a student might have. We may, in the future, depending on how we look at the data, have a chance to look at the relationship of school discipline data to the event of referral to law enforcement. I would say that there's a lot of record-keeping to look at in how this works. And I appreciate everybody's work at both at school level and in law enforcement agencies. And that working in this data where we may have some incompleteness in our own school district data does mean that there are things we'd like to understand better and may not be able to get to in quite the detail that we would hope. And finally, I would hope over time to put this in the context of comparison with other data in looking at the differences in academic outcomes, looking at differences in attendance, looking at differences in graduation dropout rates, and looking for the patterns that we see across data sources that talk about disproportionately not as good outcomes, particularly for the Latino student. Thank you, and we stand ready for your questions.
Okay. So I think if I understand this correctly, Rob, this is sort of a first step in terms of how we're understanding the landscape that surrounds the question of how we address security resource officers. And one phrase that I thought of, I was listening to, I had a long drive from Los Angeles to Denver, and I was listening to a podcast including white, nice parents, nice white parents, I don't know what it is. And the narrator was talking about sometimes when you're looking at a problem, you start with a step of reality sharing and just starting to try to find some consensus on what the landscape might look like. And I feel like this is a really good start as we understand what's happening and we all become more familiar with the disproportionate discipline for Black and Latino students, but also as we understand the role of the SRO. And I want to particularly thank Ruben for being here and sharing his story about his role and his commitment to his community. I am so surprised that you received texts, even though we've been in a pandemic now for five months. I'm somewhat stunned. So it's really interesting, and I didn't know that. And I thank you for, I would have never guessed that. So thank you for that. So I think this is where, and we have a long time, we're going to be talking about this issue for three months. So I'll start again with Richard.
Just got to remember what mouse I'm supposed to be using. I got two computers going, so. I really want to thank Officer Ruben Ramos. Ramos?
Rojas.
Rojas, perdón. Officer Rojas, in terms of this presentation, I can truly see that he really has a passion to support and help the kids at Centaurus. And you can hear it in his voice, and I just want to thank him so much for that. And I know we have a lot of wonderful school resource officers in the other ten or the other nine that we have, and they probably share the same passion and compassion for the work that they do. I also would like to say, though, that I'm hoping, one of my hopes, one of my hopes when we get the Equity Councils going or the Equity Council going is that as part of the work that they're doing, I'm looking at some of the law enforcement actions by the SROs, and I see the forty-five arrests over the past three years in total across the five agencies. More than that, I would like to see what kind of, what happened to these particular kids that were arrested? I mean, did that arrest stop at our own local jails? Did they end up in jail? Did they continue their career in some other institution as opposed to our public education institution? But that's the kind of question that I would like to see answered as we get into this whole Equity Council study and work that they're going to be doing. I understand, and I really, really, truly understand that school resource officers are passionate, compassionate, and everything else. But when I look at the data and I look at the fact that it's very, very disproportionate in terms of arrests, tickets, and all of that, that's what we've been talking about. We're not talking about the love the SROs have for students, okay? And I want to make sure people understand that. We're talking about what happens to students once they get arrested or once a ticket is issued and once they get into the criminal justice system. That's what I'm talking about. Thank you very much.
Okay, Kathy?
I don't think I have any questions. I want to say thanks to Ruben Rojas también because I thought he, like you, Tina, I was a little surprised at the end. And I think getting a glimpse into the reality of what their lives are like, the SRO's lives are like, and kind of how we're looking at security and protecting our students and our communities is really helpful. So I look forward to the conversation, and I just want to say thank you.
Katie Donna?
Yes, thank you. That was a good presentation by Ruben and letting us know more in-depth of what the officers do. But I was really interested in the data as well and that there's some analysis of the data. But to go a step further, sometimes you can make some deductions, and sometimes those are correct and sometimes they're not. I was interested in, as the presentation was going, obviously, I can't view the slides because I'm on the phone connection, but at least the slides were explained. And it was very interesting to see that a lot of the reports were made by staff. And sometimes, having been in a classroom before where there was an assault that took place and that assault was on me and I was taken to the floor, I had no choice but to try to call somebody to help. And then I had the decision to make of, do I report it or do I not? I chose in that situation not to report it, but it was interesting to me to hear that most of the calls or charges started through staff, not necessarily through an officer. So I think even if an SRO are in a school or not, somebody may have to be called in, no matter what, depending on the depth of the circumstance. So that was just interesting information. I'm looking forward to that data being looked at more in-depth and giving us some. I'm very concerned of what happens to kiddos as they move through and finish their rest where some are turned around. It's just like problems with alcoholism. Do those kiddos recover or do they turn into adults with problems? I know of some former students that have continued to have problems with alcohol throughout their life. And so I think as a society, too, we need to know how to deal with these issues and how to move kids forward and out of the situation that got them there. Thanks.
Okay, Kitty?
Couple of things I want to say thanks for. Thanks for the lit review, Rob. That was, excuse me, really helpful. And Officer Rojas, it is clear to me that you are so passionate about your students, and I really appreciate that about you. And I too was surprised that you were getting texts even though kids aren't in school. So, but I do have a question because one of the things that kids were either arrested or ticketed for was interference with staff. Is that a crime? And, I mean, I guess depending on what they do to interfere, but can somebody say more about that for me, please?
Go ahead. Brendan, address that if you will, Brendan.
Yeah, so I think there's several sections of the statute that address interference with a school. And without understanding the case specifically, I can't give you details. I know it has to have a significant disruption to the school day. For example, a report of explosives at a school that shuts it down, which is one of the cases that's mentioned in there. So, but without having the details of the exact case, I can't provide you more information. But it's actions that have a significant impact to the school and disrupt the school day.
Do you know of any examples? Or does?
Yeah, so the one that I just gave is an example that has happened. It was a false reporting of explosives, but it caused a significant disruption to one of our schools from that day and then forward on. So that was the result.
Okay, I didn't realize you'd said it was a false report. Because obviously, if somebody had explosives, that would be more than interfering with the staff, I would imagine. But, okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, I have a few. I'm curious about some of these slides. I'm looking at this slide that says "School Resource Officer Responsibilities", and we list three different things we're intending for them to do. One of which is that they're generally intended to protect all students, foster positive relationships with students, and provide valuable resources. I'm wondering if this is one of our main stated program goals, how we're measuring it?
I mean, when we get there.
I think it's one of the first.
Okay. Sorry about that, Lisa.
Yeah, right there. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we measure this as a stated goal and whether we also measure whether the opposite occurs, whether SROs in schools have negative impacts on students' feelings of safety, et cetera.
Brendan, do you have any thoughts around that?
Yeah, we don't have a measurement of how, of them protecting students. I think it's, we look at the examples and the statements of Officer Rojas and other officers like that and his experience and the three students that reached out to him during our board meeting to get information and advice and direction. So that's kind of the positive relationship, but there is no doubt that we have to show that they're doing these things.
Okay. I'm looking at the Campus Safety Officer versus School Resource Officer list. It lists under "School Resource Officers" extensive training. Am I correct that that extensive training is a forty-hour-a-week course that trains a police officer how to be an SRO?
So, and Ruben, I'll let you take this as well, but there's also, in order, the extensive training is the academy, which I believe is nine months, and then also a sixteen-week field training program. And then there's continual professional development that's required by the Colorado Post certification of the staff. There are basic and advanced SRO courses. There's continual professional development of our SROs through network meetings, regional SRO programs that put on training. So it really is dependent on what the SRO has gone through after the academy, after field training, and after the post-mandated training. And then any in-service, which I believe is, most agencies is around forty hours a year or eighty hours a year.
Okay. When I spoke with the sheriff, I believe he said that nobody, at least in his department, had ever done more than that basic forty hours. So it sounds like the bulk of this training is related to continual professional development generally as a police officer rather than specifically as an SRO.
If I'd like to speak to that issue, there are training opportunities beyond this forty-hour course that we're talking about. That's also something that I pursued on my own. There's been national conferences, state conferences as well that I've attended just on my own, just wanting to become a better professional. But I think also part of that training or expertise really comes into play. We need to take into consideration that lots of, there have been instances just by the nature of the job that they do that our teachers may potentially put in legal jeopardy just because they've been advised of a possible sexual assault that happened off-campus or a case of child abuse. There are state mandatory reporting laws in lots of and lots of times, the legal expertise comes into play when we're advising teachers as to whether or not we have something that's actionable that we need to follow up on as our mandatory reporting requirements require us to do. So there's a lot of conversations throughout the school day regarding legal matters with teachers, administrators, staff, disinformation that comes to them just in their daily interactions with students.
Thank you. I'm looking at the arrest statistics slide and wondering if I could ask Jonathan some questions. And I don't know if you can answer these, Jonathan. Sorry, it just says "arrest statistics" at the top.
The next one.
Yes. I'm wondering if those sex offenses, do you know how many, if any, occurred in K5s?
I don't.
Okay. Interference with school and staff, I was going to ask about that. I'm surprised that we would put false reporting of a bomb in there. I would be interested to understand more about that generally as well, like Kitty. I have some worries that that kind of crosses over with some of the things we see in discipline, where when we have a feeling that some staff members or other folks can get in a lack of safety with our students of color, that this feels like it might be sort of a similar category. And I'd like to understand more about what things go in. I'm wondering about the warrant arrest. So these are arrests for crimes that were committed off-campus for which a warrant was issued, and then these students were arrested on our campus for those warrants?
So we don't know where the crimes occurred at, and we just know that the arrest occurred on the school campus.
And then "Law enforcement called mostly by staff". It said "Staff initiates 72% of all calls". I wonder if we know in how many cases the staff had the opportunity to contact a school safety officer or a social worker and chose not to, or in how many of those cases there wasn't that option available, and the SRO was their only option. I don't think you have that data today, but I would be interested in understanding that moving forward. I would also be interested in, when we look at this "School Resource Officers summons", I wonder if we could get a breakdown of this chart by school that also includes a column of what the proportion at the school is by race? Is that something we could look at as well? I know these are future requests, but as long as we're here.
We can take that back, Lisa, and decide if that's something that we could do. I think the worry is, as you start getting really granular with some of this data, then you run the risk of potentially, you know, potentially revealing somebody's identity at a school that you didn't mean to do. Is that accurate, Jonathan, in regards to the kind of the end size of the data? You've got to be careful with that, right?
Right. We would want to think real carefully about the right level to share it at. And the need for us also to process this with folks on staff to understand, right? I mean, if we find a different pattern in one area, right? Where you're typically talking about one or two high schools contributing to the bulk of these statistics per area. That's the... We want to look at that ideally in the process. I would lay out, look at it with folks on staff first to make sure we understand the pattern, and then work from there. But yes, I think some level of breaking this data out makes good sense. And hopefully to do it in a way that can engage people in a conversation with data. I mean, that's part of the value of data, is obviously its ability to begin to spark a conversation, have a common point to talk about and ask about. So I think there will be, as I've perhaps also said too many times, but I will say it again, data is usually better at getting more questions than actually answering them. This will cause us to ask more questions about what we do and reflect on our practice and how we can improve. And that's really the great value.
I appreciate that, Jonathan. And I think if we need to start at the school level, that's fine. I just think when we're looking at this race data, that it speaks for itself. And I'm curious whether these statistics are sort of fairly close to being the same across our district, or as you mentioned, whether there are specific areas where we're seeing more problems than others. I'm also a little disappointed we didn't see any statistics tonight on sped breakdowns in terms of interactions of police officers. When I was speaking with folks in our GAL programs and our CASA programs, and what else, our BEST program, there was a lot of concern about the interactions between sped students and SROs. And I think we know nationally as well that that's an area where we have enormous concerns. So I really appreciate the breakdown by race and all this information. I would hope that in the future, we could maybe get some more data on those sped interactions as well. Let's see here. I'm also wondering, you said we have 10 SROs, is that right?
That is correct.
How many are white?
I don't, we'll have to get that information to you, Lisa. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Rob, is it safe to say the majority of our SROs are white, though? I mean, we don't have the numbers, but...
Yeah, I'd say the majority of them are white.
Is that what you're asking, Lisa?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Like Richard, I appreciate, it's clear that Officer Rojas loves his job and does it very well. But I also think it's important to point out that when we talk about this mentor relationship, the food bank referrals, talking to students about their day, mediating relationships between students and their parents, having drug awareness conversations, that all of these are things that LCSWs are specifically trained to do over a period of years in a master's education, followed by hundreds of hours of in-person work prior to licensure. And I have no doubt that Officer Rojas does his job well and loves his students, but I also think it's worth noting that there are professionals who specifically do that work. I think, as a last thought, looking at this data, I noticed that there's a huge number of summons and arrests for pot and beer. I think about knowing maybe one kid in high school, the whole time I went to high school, who never had a beer or never smoked a joint. I look at the number of kids who are getting arrested here, and I think on the one hand, that it seems like a huge number of folks whose lives are being put in peril, whose futures are being put in peril over a beer or a joint when they're in high school. And on the other hand, it feels like an incredibly small number compared to the number of folks in our schools who are definitely engaging in these activities. And I'm curious, who gets picked? Why are some of our students ending up with summons and arrests for these activities and others aren't? I'm sure some of it is because some of our folks are doing it on campus and others aren't. But I'm curious, are all these arrests occurring on campus, or are some of them occurring because activity off-campus? And how many folks are we seeing more engaging in things like this on campus, and it's not leading to a summons, it's not leading to an arrest? I'd be curious to understand more about the disconnect between this number versus the number of students overall engaging in those activities. That's all I have.
Okay. Stacy?
I have two questions, and in the interest of time, they don't have to be answered today, but just at some point. My questions are around the campus safety officer. I'm curious about what qualifications one has to have to be a campus safety officer. And then similarly, what is the training that these campus safety officers go through to be an effective campus safety officer, to do these things that they're being asked to do?
We will get you that information this week, Stacy.
Great, thanks.
Okay, and I just have a couple questions. One is, it would be helpful at some point just to see how our arrest data, I think this is over three years, how the number of arrests and the variety of arrests compare with other like districts in our state? Just understanding overall, are we aggressive with arrests, or are we non-aggressive? You know, what does that look like? The other pieces, I've read that Michael Doherty is doing some efforts, specifically on what Lisa talked about with the marijuana and alcohol, to address those with restorative justice more frequently, rather than prosecuting those issues. So I would like to, if there's any way that we could get more information from Michael Doherty's office about how that's happening and how quickly it will affect our students, and hopefully make it so students don't have those marks on their records for what's a pretty prevalent activity in our school district, from what I can tell. And then the last thing, just as we move along, it just makes me think about the people who will be a part of the Equity Council and all the different voices that I hope can be heard, including the people who work in the buildings, and of course, the students, and just making sure that they all have a chance to be heard. So that's all I have. Anything else? Any other final thoughts? Kitty?
Yes, one thing I forgot to mention, Officer Rojas was talking about mandatory reporting. And I know we had an incident not in Lafayette, so I know it was not you, but something had happened at a middle school that definitely needed to be reported, and the SRO said, "No, it didn't", because he knew that it would probably not be acted on. But that's not what the mandatory reporting law says. It's not up to the reporter to determine whether or not there will be action taken. It's up to the reporter to report. And it does concern me that there was an officer who seemed to be ignorant of that law. So that's something I think, I mean, if we keep them, I think they need to understand the reporting law.
Okay. Any other final thoughts or concerns? All right. And then you can always follow up with an email to Rob if you want to list out other questions about data, questions about the role of the SRO, the campus security officer, and other individuals in the buildings that are part of this school building safety solution that we have. So our next item is supposed to be legislative update, but I don't think we have one. So unless Kathy or someone else has something, I'd like to just go to our action items. Is that okay with everyone? Great. So our action items are 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, July 21st, 2020, Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, August 4th, 2020, Special Meeting, 7.4 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond Funded Improvement Work at Helsion School, 7.5 Change Order to the Furniture Vendor Contract for Bond Funded Improvement Work at the Reproal Ridge High School IT Department, 7.6 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond Funded Work at the Lafayette Elementary School, 7.7 Helsion and Mental Health Partner Service Agreement, 7.8 Parkdale School Site Dedication and Exchange Agreements. Are there any items that Board members would like to pull? All right, seeing none, could I get a motion to approve those items? So moved by Kitty, I need a second, by Stacy. I have one question. Rob, or maybe, oh, Donna, yeah? Do you want to say something?
No.
Okay. I just had a question, and I know on the Parkdale dedication in Erie, are we good on oil drilling on its proximity to any potential or existing sites for fracking?
Dr. Anderson, if you don't mind, Glenn Segrew is joining us tonight, since he's waited all this time, in case a question came up. I'm going to let Glenn address that.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, the site at one time had extensive oil and gas operations throughout the overall development, but the developers had gone through and bought those up, their rights to those, one by one. So he's cleared out most of the oil and gas on the site. There's some much, much further away that they consolidate in the lower left-hand corner or the lower south-east corner of the overall development. It's quite far away from any of the school sites we've been looking at. So the only real remaining one is actually on Boulder County property to the north. But right now, the spacing to that looks like it should be pretty good. So there won't be any oil and gas, I mean, the developers bought up the oil and gas undermining rights and things like that as well. So there shouldn't be any future issues that way.
Fantastic.
And also, I think the way the agreements are structured, the burden for oil and gas on our school site is on the developer, not on us. So if something does come up, before, at least before closing, that'll be, that burden will be on the developer.
Okay, I really appreciate you understanding the scenario so we can avoid what happened last time.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions about the consent agenda? Okay, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Get part.
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so our next item is 9.1 Adoption of the New Board Policy Regulation Policy AC2 Title IX. And just a reminder that because this is a regulation, we don't have to follow the normal policy review because it's a regulation, not an overarching policy. So can I first get a, does anyone want to pull the item? Okay. Kitty?
I didn't want to pull it, I just wanted to talk about it.
Yeah, we're going to talk about it, but no one wants to pull it?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the item? By Kitty? Do I have a second? By Stacy. Okay, so questions, and actually, would everyone prefer for Kathleen just to talk about the significant changes in this policy compared to the prior one? Or do you just want to start with questions? Changes, do a thumbs up. Okay. Kathleen, can you run through any significant changes?
Sure. There are quite a lot of them. So we received a new set of regulations mid-May. The primary changes, there are a lot of them. We have a new definition of sexual harassment. It is a higher standard. So it has an entirely new definition that we need to incorporate into the regulation. The other revisions are primarily procedural. Instead of having one person who's acting as the Title IX officer in any individual matter, the school district is now required to have three roles. We need to have a coordinator, which is a role that I currently hold, as does Mike Grados and Melissa Ribery in the HR Office Department. That's in front of you in ACE-1. So in addition to those roles, we will have trained investigators and decision makers. And the regulations really are extremely prescriptive. You will see that after the evidence is collected by an investigator, there needs to be, both parties receive a copy of that evidence. They have 10 days to provide input about how the evidence should be viewed before an investigation report is prepared. And then after that report is prepared, both sides have an opportunity to ask questions of the other. And that process is managed by the decision maker. And then the rest of the regulation would be familiar. Requirements for more detailed written notices, some additional requirements around the report itself. And those really are the primary changes. But it, I think, is informative of why we have a nine-page regulation. There's a lot of ground to cover and a lot of details.
Okay, so I'll, we'll go questions, and I'll just go in the order we've been going in. Richard, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Kathy?
No questions, thanks.
Okay. Donna?
None.
Kitty?
No.
Oh, thank you, Donna.
Don't I always have something to say about policy? Now, some of it is just like writing stuff, and is it okay if I just email that instead of go over it? But I did also have questions. Kathleen's nodding okay. Okay, so I don't have to take time for that. But I highlighted this, and I can't remember what my question was. Oh, about supportive measures are available without charge, even if they don't file a formal complaint. And then to both parties. So if there's a complaint, I mean, if there's not a formal complaint, then only the complainant gets the support?
So what I would say is this, we have a lot of students in our district that require support of some kind or another. So it's never a requirement that there be a formal complaint process before a student would receive something like a safety plan or a support plan. But the regulations themselves want... But the regulations themselves want, they want districts to be clear to students that they don't have to initiate a formal complaint in order to receive some supports at school that will better enable them to access education.
Okay, and hang on. So under the mandatory reporting where it says employees are required to report actual or suspected harassment or retaliation, and obviously the part that can't be confidential, but to whom are employees required to report harassment? Because you don't report that to social services or the police, so they report it in-house?
Right, so the purpose of that is to make sure that employees know to refer any report that they get so it can be acted upon. That's why we're making sure our Title IX coordinators are clearly known. And we've started a new email address that's just TitleIX@bvsd to try and facilitate those notices.
Okay, and, okay, so hang on, let me. Okay, so under filing a complaint, and I would give a page number, but there aren't any. The 1, 2, 3, 4 paragraph, in certain cases, the Title IX coordinator, oops, I was on my, I don't know if you heard that, I was on my keyboard, let me move it. In certain cases, the Title IX coordinator may sign a formal complaint on behalf of the school district when a complainant declines to file a formal complaint and the Title IX coordinator determines an investigation is necessary. In these circumstances, the Title IX coordinator does not become a party and a complainant shall not be compelled to participate in the grievance process. So could you give an example of what that might be?
Um, so if we were to receive, for example, a complaint that there is widespread harassment within a program, we could say an athletic program, an arts program, even if we didn't have an individual who was coming forward to assert that as a claim based on their own personal experience, if it's something we became aware of as a district, we would initiate our own investigation. Candidly, that's not a change of practice. When we hear of complaints or allegations of discrimination or harassment, we investigate those now.
Okay, good, that's. And then on, under District Resolution Procedures, the, oh, and I'm sorry, under informal resolution, the second bullet point is when it can be informal and not formal, but when the respondent accepts responsibility for violating policy and desires to accept sanction and end the resolution process and the complainant agrees. I'm just picturing a situation where you have a couple and there is a dynamic of domestic violence. And I know it talks about later on that the complainant's not coerced. But, you know, if there's a situation of domestic violence, I would just be concerned, I don't know how to put it, but that the investigator be aware that just because the complainant is saying it's okay, do you know, be aware of what's going on with them? Because I could see that happening.
Yes, and we really heard this from, you heard from Sophie Dellenjer earlier today. We heard a lot of feedback about making sure that the informal resolution process isn't something that re-traumatizes students who've already had adverse experiences. We, we are definitely going to be training and really thoughtful about how we implement that process because we hear a lot about that concern and certainly understand it.
Okay, good, thanks. And then a little farther down on the paragraph right above grievance process, alternate resolution is rarely appropriate or advisable in cases involving violent incidents, dangerous patterns, or threat. So it's rarely appropriate, when would it be appropriate?
I, I cannot think of an example. When you read the regulations, the encouragement is never to be absolute and say it would absolutely never be appropriate. But again, I think we would approach that with caution, which is why you see reference there to making sure we've got trauma-informed and well-informed facilitators who are assisting us in determining when it's appropriate and how it should work.
Yeah, and I'm really glad to hear talking about trauma-informed because people suffering trauma can present in a way that sometimes makes somebody think they're making stuff up and not telling the truth. So I think it's really important. And, you know, in my other career at Blue Sky Bridge, I had talked to people who had been, you know, a school counselor brought something to the sheriff's department, sheriff's department dismissed it. And when it was clear to me that something was probably going on. Okay, number, where are we? It's talking about where evidence review and it's on, but I don't know what page it is. It's a couple pages from where I just was. But anyway, it says where evidence may be redacted if appropriate. So can you give an example of what kind of evidence would be redacted?
Yeah, so when you think about a Title IX investigation, you usually have a person who's been alleged to have engaged in misconduct and then this student who's alleged to have been targeted by that conduct. So if we're looking at an evidence review, we're going to have documents that have the names of both of those students. So to the extent that the law permits, we will be redacting any of that information.
Okay, that I understand. Okay, then when, under, I guess it's the same general heading, on the next page where there's a bullet point B and it's standards for decision. And it says, "The decision maker shall consider the investigation report but is not bound by the decision." I don't understand that. Aren't they the one going to make the decision?
So the investigation report that is prepared, so the purpose of that language is to say that the decision maker is not bound by any of the findings or recommendations or any of that language of the investigation report. So this is where having.
Because in that case, it sounds like the investigation report comes to a decision, but they don't, right? Because the decision maker does that.
Well, I think a lot of that is yet to be borne out. A lot of districts, we're all working through exactly what the nuances are going to be. But I definitely hear the comment that we can improve on that sentence and that language.
Okay, great. Then at the bottom of that page, under Appeal, Reasons You Can Appeal B says, "New evidence that was not reasonably available at the time the determination regarding responsibility or dismissal was made that could affect the outcome of the matter." So understanding that sometimes this will be involving kids, what if there's evidence, but for whatever reason, it could have been available but wasn't because maybe a kid said, "Oh, I didn't want to tell you about that," or, you know, some of those things that they do. Can that, would that be excluded then from an appeal?
Well, I think that the intent is to say that if you've already been through this entire process, you don't want to introduce new evidence between decision-making and appeal. But if we have new conduct or new allegations, it may mean that there's a new investigation.
Yeah, because I was just thinking how kids are not going to be completely forthcoming all the time. Sometimes they will be. And I would just hate for something that could influence a decision that a kid did not disclose because of whatever reason, embarrassment or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, I think this is one of the issues that's created by the fact that these regulations are written to govern pre-kindern through college.
Yeah.
And they don't necessarily fit very well in K-12 with some of the pieces. But I think that what we've heard from our students and from our community partners and the research frankly, is that we have to deal with conduct and we have to deal with the impact of that conduct on our students. Making sure that they're able to access their education, come to school when we're all able to come to school and learn and develop into the people that they need to be. And we're about creating the conditions for kids to do that. So this is just one policy in our full set of policies that really enable us to take action on behalf of our kids.
Okay, thank you, and that, believe it or not, is all I have.
Okay, Lisa?
Pass.
Okeydoke, Stacy?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, I just had a quick question, just following up on the the window of appealing within the 10-day window. If new evidence comes two months later after the 10 days, can you still go back and open it?
I think then you're probably looking at a new investigation. But certainly, if we're talking about kids who are still impacted by events, we have multiple ways that we're going to be able to do that, I think, without making this too legalistic, a process that gets in the way of making sure our kids don't face harassment at school. So yes, we'll be able to address it.
And then all of this investigation is confidential and is not QRA-able, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we can say that to people that it can't be discovered through QRA, even if it's through an email to a board member or anything like that?
I think what I would say to our community, if they're emailing a board member and they're really concerned about the content that they're putting in it, the best protection comes by saying, "I want this communication to be kept confidential." Because there is a specific provision in QRA that addresses that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or final thoughts before we vote to accept this policy?
And may I, may I just clarify, President Marquess, that because normally there's a 30-day period from the time the board looks at a regulation before it takes effect, that this will need to take effect on August 14th in compliance with the federal law.
Okay, does my, does our motion need to reflect that?
The motion in the board's agenda does in fact reflect that, so I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
Great. Laura, would you call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
She lost her phone communication.
Thank you. Sergeant.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zuss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is the, the next policy item, which is 9.1, whoops, sorry. I'm missing 9.2. It's for 9.2 Policy IGA, the Basic Instructional Program on First Reading in accordance with Board Policy BG. So this is not an, is this an action item?
This is an action item and I apologize that they were separated.
That's okay, it just says in, on first reading. So I think I'm just going to take that part out, so, yeah. So does anyone, we got some information about why we're looking at IG, which is basically changing our instructional program to reflect the virtual environment that we're stuck in. Does anyone, first of all, do we have a motion to approve it? Okay, moved by Kathy, seconded by Kitty. Any questions or discussions? Starting with Richard. No, okay. Kathy?
I just want to say, just as a reminder, that this is really important for our funding and for our students because we need to make sure that at the end of this year, they've completed their hours of instruction that are required by the state. So thank you, Kathleen, for bringing this forward and just making sure we've covered everything because when we get audited, we need to make sure we've got the right policies.
Okay, Donna, I think had to go. Kitty?
Well, of course, but it's quick. So at the, I guess the last paragraph before the bullet points at the end, it talks about actively engaged and being under the supervision of a certified or licensed teacher. Do all of the charter schools require their teachers to be licensed?
Well, our charter schools do have some different licensure requirements depending on their charter. The language, I think, of the policy that you're talking about, there's also language above that talks about as long as the teacher is exercising control over the activities. I'm not sure that's germane to your question though, if it's just about licensure.
Well, and I'm just, because that's what it says here and I just know that, I know there are some charter schools that employ teachers who aren't certified. And I didn't know if ours did or if this, if they have a different policy or what.
Yeah, it would depend on their charter as to whether or not they had waived this policy. I know that some of our charter schools are looking at resolutions that align with this board but also reflect the nature of their charter school and their, their separate structure.
Okay, so I just don't want them to get in trouble or anything, that's it.
Okay, Lisa? Okay, Stacy? All right, and actually just following up on Kitty's, and if a student is being helped by a tutor or a para educator, would that not count toward those hours?
No, usually when our para educators are working with our students, they are implementing instruction that's under the direction and control of a teacher, that would qualify.
Triple seven, okay, great. Laura, would you like to call the roll?
Certainly. Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Has Myers returned?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay. Sergeant, Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zuss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so then we have two study items. One of them is time-sensitive, those are the CASB resolutions. The second one is not time-sensitive. So if it's okay, would you be okay going through the CASB resolutions and then putting the second item on strategic, the opportunity metrics for the next meeting? Would everyone be okay with that?
Tina, I think we could even push the CASB resolutions.
You think we could?
Uh-huh.
Okay, would it be possible for you to send us an email just giving us some background about the CASB resolutions or?
Sure, I was just going to look up the new deadlines. We got an email not too long ago, but the delegate assembly's not till the end of October now.
Okeydoke, great. Is everyone okay with pushing these two items back since it's after 10? Okay.
I want to make sure Kitty's okay since she would be our delegate. Is she okay with pushing it back?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Great. And then our final item is agenda setting. If you have anything, do you want to just send it to Rob? Okay, great. All right, with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting. So thank you all, have a good evening, have a good week.
Good night.
Good night.